You may have to meet next week.
Yep. Okay, I got seven o'clock, so I think Ryan, we're going live. Yep, 10 seconds, live now. Here you go.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of July 15th, 2020. This meeting is being held fully remote in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law GLC 30A Section 20. Before I go, just reminding our next meeting, hopefully we're all going to be in a room with some social. I would remind you tonight, we are not only video live, we are audio live, so keep that in mind. We haven't been video live for any of the meetings and we finally have got that figured. So, thank you very much, by the way, Ryan. We appreciate it. I'd ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Okay, would you also join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America. And to their republic, for which it stands.
One nation, God. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming this evening. It's a beautiful Sunday.
Sitting in the backyard here, Bob.
I'm gonna take roll call attendance. Bob Hayes, yes. Fred Small.
Yes.
Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Hillary Niffen.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
He's just coming in, Bob. Just admitted him. There he is.
Jonesy, Mike Jones.
Pass over and go and get him at the end.
Back to him, Chris Howard.
Yeah.
David Forth.
Yes.
Ian Colley.
Yes.
Don Myers.
Yes.
Steve Voice.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes. There you go.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Roll call is finished. An entertaining motion, excuse me, accept the meeting minutes of June 29th, 2020.
Moved by Dan Colley.
Will make that motion. Mr. Small seconded it.
Motion, did you hear that, Michelle? Mr. Colley made the motion. Mr. Small seconded it. Any discussion? Hillary Niffen.
Yes.
Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Fred Small.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Mike Jones.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
David Forth.
Yes.
Ian Colley.
Yes.
Don Myers.
Yes.
Steve Voice.
Yes.
Okay. Jeff, you're on.
Thank you. So, first item of business is I need a vote of the school committee to appoint me to the board of directors of the South Shore Collaborative. I'm the lucky one that gets to serve. So, as you know, we applied to the South Shore Collaborative. It is a nice little tuition decrease. In fact, they decided as a board, I haven't been officially appointed, but they decided as a board to keep their tuition rates at the 2019-2020 level. They didn't increase their rates at all. We were projecting an increase of the rate of about $1,100 per student and currently we have 11 students there. So, every nickel and dime helps, but I need an appointment from this committee to represent our district on the board of directors.
Motion.
Will make that motion to appoint Jeff Simonak as our representative to the Social Educational Collaborative.
Seconded by Mr. Voice.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff, so this is very similar to the North River Collaborative. It's a superintendent.
Yes.
And I know we'll add the 25th hour in the day so that you can have all the time to do all these things. Do they ever have alternates or do they ever have any of the elected school committee members attend?
Michelle.
Trying to pull that together and they did it once, but they didn't.
Michelle, what was the response back from the collab? I know it was the superintendent.
As far as I know, it's a superintendent-based board. So, they look for superintendents to attend the meetings and do the voting.
Okay, very good. Well, if there's that opportunity to jump in.
Okay.
Certainly.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Voice.
Yes.
And keep in mind, this is a vote to appoint superintendent. Don Myers.
Yes.
Ian Colley.
Yes.
David Forth.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Hillary Niffen.
Yes.
Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Fred Small.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay, keep going.
So, as far as the superintendent's evaluation, just a point, a couple of points of clarification. It's the school committee board 2019-2020 that will be doing the formal evaluation, although it'll be a public meeting for this committee. I think, Bob, you had mentioned sometime in September that the evaluations are due. I'm asking the committee to reconsider that and have the evaluations due sometime in mid-August so I could formally be evaluated before the beginning of the school year, which is September 8th. So, maybe our last August meeting or September meeting. I'd rather not go into October without some clarity from the committee on how they want me to proceed with goals for 2021. If that's okay.
I have no issues with that. If no one does, as long as everybody gets it to Michelle or myself so we can tabulate the results and come up with the evaluation. But I'm gonna need it in the beginning of August, so that's probably gonna give you two and a half weeks roughly. Is everybody okay with that? Chris?
Bob, just give us the date. When do you want to buy?
I'm not looking. I mean, I've got my calendar.
Friday the 7th.
That's good.
Friday the 7th would be great.
Okay, that works. Michelle, does that give you enough time? It's gonna take us 20 minutes, half an hour to do it. After we get it done. You're okay?
Yes.
Okay, is everybody good with that? I need it by the 7th, please. Or before. Before is better. Okay, keep going, Jeff.
Thanks. So, in your packet, you have a copy or a real draft copy of the strategic plan 2020 to 2025, or to 2023, excuse me. What I'm looking for is for you to review this and provide me either email input or input at our next meeting so we can vote on this prior to the beginning of the school year. But I would love to have school committee input on this. You would have been more involved in the spring if not for COVID-19. We were collaborating prior to going out and we finally got our admin team to put together some of the bullet points in June. But I really would like to get some school committee input on where we are, what you would like to see in this as well. Looking at this document, we developed it prior to COVID and what next year looks like. So, we could put some bullet points in this as well that we could achieve next year in 2021. So, it's just something for you to review right now and then provide me again email input for discussion or discussion items at our next meeting and then we could vote to approve it sometime middle of August or prior to the start of the school year.
Go ahead, Mr. Voice.
Jeff, thank you for that and I'm still reviewing it as well. Can we possibly put some revenue numbers with some of the strategic plan areas? And I say that because last year, when, you know, hold it up kind of quickly, but last year when we did the budget, we did an excellent job. We had the strategic plan. We listed the pillars, you know, and we were, we knew what our focus was and where our money was and so forth. And I'm only, I'm not jumping any gun or anything, but I'm only anticipating, you know, maybe there is an efficiency in doing certain things like, for instance, the whole having more special ed kids in the district and so forth and the savings there, different things like that. I don't know. I mean, it could be across the board. Others may feel differently, but I was just thinking.
So, a goal, Steve, we could put in there as one of our action items is to reduce expenses in that area that you're talking about. So, we can put some numbers together. Okay. Costs or future costs as we predict. I know some folks want us to look at really one-to-one and, you know, I'll go into where we are with technology in a little bit. But again, this is just, put your thoughts out there because I really would like your input because this is gonna drive our district. It's the district strategic plan and this piggybacks on Miss Byers as far as school committee goals. And I think that was a great piece and I think as we get back into some sort of normalcy, we can put together school committee goals based on the strategic plan, yearly goals or multi-year goals to really, so they can marry each other. So, then when we come back in February and we're discussing finances, we can allude to the school committee goals and the strategic plan. So, the school committee really hasn't had goals that have been written down, they all based into the strategic plan. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea as we move into another three or five-year process. So, I think this is one step of getting some input on the overall strategic plan and then I would help you develop goals as a committee so that I could help you achieve those goals as well. It should be a collaborative effort.
Don?
Sure. Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate it. It's a working document, so I hope you don't mind if I give some feedback. Looking at page three, it does have outcome 2.3, on 2.1 curriculum and outcome 2.2 instruction. I know they've been left empty. In the previous strategic plan that just expired in 2020, we did have full-day kindergarten as a goal for FY19. We didn't meet that. So, do you anticipate adding full-day kindergarten in this document under one of these outcomes?
I think, I think we could do that. And again, that's for us. If we decide as a committee, this is a goal for us, that's what we can include in as we strive for that. I mean, part for me is that curriculum cycle. We've never had a curriculum cycle and we've established one now, so I'd like us all to work together to do that. So, I think what you're saying is absolutely on point. Again, we talked about this before full-day K. The nation nationally, we want to strive for a full-day pre-K for all kids. So, I mean, we can, I want the feedback on this, again, either via email so I can include the document. We can discuss the document and then ultimately you're gonna approve the document. So, I feel you're the body that wants, if you want to add, I can strive for that absolutely. So, when we try to hit the benchmarks, we can use this towards, or for the taxpayers to say, we've been working on this since, and I know we had full-day K on since 2010, we've been working on this for 15 years. It's about time we try to hit it. Now, we've been able to hit some of our goals in the last strategic plan and the pillars by putting some social emotional support, some curriculum support. The ones that I do feel we failed to hit, hit, hit it is some of those large expense items. And it always seems that they get pushed off, pushed off. But if it's a goal of this committee and it's on our strategic plan, we keep revisiting that yearly or monthly or every six months, we can absolutely do that. So, feel free to add as much input in this document as you can.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to add anything after the meeting, you know, that you think of as the night moves on, don't hesitate to call the superintendent and voice your opinion.
That's from the public too, correct. Yes.
This is the time to do it. Fred, you're up next.
Thank you. I think that we would perhaps need to devote an entire meeting, you know, to this and this alone. You know, for all of us to absorb what we're reading. But in addition to the initiative, I think we need to also collaborate as to how we're going to accomplish it. One, I feel a great failure that I participated in was the fact that we could never, we made a commitment to get full-day K. And unfortunately, it failed at the ballot box. And after that failed, we didn't really have a backup. And I think if we can identify what we want to accomplish, but also how we're going to get there and devote an entire meeting, whether it's an hour, two hours, whatever, that's in the best interest of everybody and to keep our focus just on that. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
Chris, then Dan.
I'll piggyback on that, Fred. So, I agree. And, you know, looking at this, the one area where, you know, Jeff knows, we've talked a little bit in the past around that engagement concept. I know I'm talking with Don a little bit after the meeting where we, she had introduced the concept of having, you know, some additional thought around the goal. So, I will get you something, Jeff, Bob, on maybe a way that, so I agree, Fred, I think having some of these working sessions is important. I started to play around with the documents, but I think, or maybe some questions that we could just, not what should we do, but more of the questions of, you know, have we thought about how we engage with the community? Because Fred, when I think about things like full-day kindergarten, some of those things, it all comes down to our collective engagement with the citizens of both towns and developing that understanding so that they understand what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it and how we're trying to do it. So, I couldn't agree more, Fred. I think spending some time talking about some of these elements, specifically how we interact as a committee, what's important, how we communicate, what are the vehicles we're using? I think that's all really good and important stuff. So, it'd be a good time to do this.
Thanks, Chris. Dan?
Yeah, piggyback off Chris and Fred. I agree, we have to do this. One of the mistakes, like Fred was pointing out, we never had that fallback in case it did fail. We've always just come up and said, put the kindergarten, let's get that in there. With no real plan on how it was gonna be done. We've discussed it on the side, you know, here and there and little bits and pieces of meetings. But, yeah, we should take this offline, have a meeting just for this type to get everything in there and really discover what we need to do to get this in there. And like both Fred and Chris were saying, you know, engagement with the community is gonna be the key. We lost in the ballot box, so we have to have an understanding to the people. We have to sell it, why we need this, all the good points. You are, Jeff's been lucky to get the social and emotional needs put in their place. Now, it's gonna get this kindergarten because every child should be given the education, not just the one skin and board it.
So, Bob, if I can just jump in, I love the conversation and I appreciate, and I, George and myself can be taskmasters with you guys in the working sessions to make sure that we don't sidetrack because one of the areas we've run into since I've been superintendent is the focus of our meetings always go back to budget and the lack of resources that we have. So, I'm very encouraged with the talk of education and kids and prioritizing kids and where we want to go academically and emotionally and not just talk about the dollars and cents. So, I'm getting excited, you know, excited for another meeting in the summer. But, you know, I think it'll be a good thing for us and we can keep this as a working, you know, agenda item as we move through. Even if we have the strategic plan, we can commit, you know, 15 or 20 minutes to a school committee meeting on where we're at and where the areas that I'm gonna need committee support and taxpayer support in achieving the goals of the strategic plan. So, this makes me excited. And so, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Don?
Thanks, Jeff. And just to add to that, the curriculum piece, you've added the math last year and we now know ELA. I'd like to forward and have discussion, science curriculum, right? And just keep that moving.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, that's absolutely it. And it's not gonna be K to 12. We're gonna have to read. The opportunity, because of the pandemic, and this is one we spoke of our leaders, with our leadership team, is an opportunity to rethink how we teach kids. And good, bad, and indifferent, it's given us an opportunity to think way outside the box and we've hit some home runs and we've struck out on a few things, but it's an opportunity to think differently. And the principals are pretty excited about that. And if the committee can get excited about not thinking about how we went to school, about how school is in 2020 and how it shifted in 1920 to what it's gonna be like from 2020 to 2028. And it's a great opportunity to move forward and do some different things for our kids. And again, keeping the focus in on our kids. So, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I just add one thing real quick. And perhaps, Jeff, you and George could be charged with some of this research and I know we've spoken in the past. STEM. As far as what we can do to enhance offerings at the high school. Because with school choice and having a strong STEM program, and I know at one time there was discussion, I think it was back to a principal, about being able to put some sort of a nursing program together.
Yep.
For the high school. That may attract people and that may be a way of bringing in revenues while being able to better educate our own, you know, which would be a win-win. And I know we've done a little bit as far as the vote tech and how we could, you know, perhaps get grants and whatnot on some of that, you know, using some of those monies for those things as well.
I agree, Fred. Again, thinking, thinking very differently than how we've thought in the past. And I, if the committee can keep that mindset, it's not how we went to school, what we want to see for our kids and not understanding the budget constraints, but how do we develop around them? Fred, when we were talking about that nursing piece, we were also looking at vet tech. We were also looking at medical transcription, having kids actually come out of high school with some sort of certification that they could bypass two years of Massa Sawyer. So, there are, there is stuff out there. And again, since I've been in this chair, all we've done is reduce. So, if we can get some momentum on why it's important to move forward, both financially and through curriculum and commitment to our kids, and that's the goal of this committee, I'm 1,000% behind that.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Thanks. So, the next item is reopening guidance updates. So, I know if you watch the news, if you look at social media, pick a social media from the national direction that we're gonna open, all schools are gonna open in September to, just yesterday, Governor Sununu in New Hampshire is leaving up, opening back to districts and they're giving different guidance. Desi's been pretty consistent that we have to establish three different plans for reopening of school in September. That being said, that'll be, those plans will be due July 31st. Our team is working on those plans. And let me just tell you, each building has a COVID-19 building-based team that's looking at specifics within that building. So, when you think about reopening, if we were to reopen full with the current guidelines of three feet apart, we have to come out or come up with scenarios of how kids enter buildings, how kids get their lunch, how kids go to the bathroom, how kids wash their hands, where their lockers are gonna be, if they can use lockers, if there's transitions. So, we have building-based teams with parents at the high school and maybe at the middle school level. But I know at the high school level, kids, teachers, and administrators putting together their building-based plan. On the district team, I'll just let you know who these folks are. George Pharaoh's the point person right now. I'm on the team with Lauren Matheson representing special education. Ernie Sandlin in facilities. Lisa Tobin is our lead nurse and she represents health. Kevin Kafka and Cindy McGann from WHEA. John Tuffy's the financial guru. He's getting us all the money. Karen Villa and Aleva in transportation. She's got the toughest job in the district right now because we have no guidance in transportation. Bob Rogers from athletics. Jane Cox from the K to 6 teaching and learning area curriculum. Nadine Newseth from food services. Steve Burke in tech. Kim Bardnard is our SIMS person, our data person that we're gonna have to report to the state. Coram Myet is gonna do all my communications and surveys with parents and staff. I am gonna look for a school committee representative so we can decide that tonight. We can have more than one, but it's gonna be live. We're meeting live as best we can. Michelle is our HR policy and legal person. We have two Excel members, member of the social emotional team that we've, we're committed to. It's Chrissy Thornton and Carrie Doherty. We have Karen Downey and Darlene Foley representing elementary and Chris Jones is representing the secondary piece. We're meeting on Monday to start. We've had informal meetings, different pieces, but the full team's gonna meet on Monday to start making sure we have our plans in place. Let me just tell you briefly, these are very, very rough drafts because I've gotten some calls from some parents already about what does school look like in the fall. So, I'm taking a swig of water because I've got some things to say. We're looking at a full opening. What a full opening means is yet to be determined. Right now, DESI guidelines or DESI recommendations are six feet apart with a minimum of three feet apart in a classroom. So, Ernie Sandlin is doing a pressure test in all classrooms right now for all the different sizes of what we have. But basically, if we put kids three feet in a classroom with proper egress based upon fire codes, we can put the max 23 kids in our average class size. If that's six feet apart, cut that in half. That's 12. We have no classes that are running at 12 right now. Something like 200 sections of high school classes are above 23 right now. So, just think of those in perspective. If we were to go back full, we can use every available spot within each school building to potentially have classes. That doesn't mean that I have all the teachers that can fill those classes. We've asked the teachers in every building to take out their own personal property and anything that is not school-related. And when I say school-related, think of the old 1920 to 1950s desks that you have a desk facing the teacher's desk and that's all you have in the classroom. No bookshelves, no, no extra chairs, no extra tables. They've been the directive of the commissioner. So, every school in the Commonwealth is now reducing all the extra materials within their classes. Gary Pelletier actually sent me a picture of a classroom from 1920 when the teacher stands at the desk and lectures at the blackboard and there's 30 kids looking in their bolted-down chairs, looking at that. But that's what school's gonna look like, folks, right now, based upon, on the requirements and recommendations. So, if we go full, it's three feet. We're measuring it out. I don't know if we have the capacity in the traditional classrooms, even in the gymnasium or the cafeteria, to be able to go back full. If we have a budget reduction and I'm on a 1/12, I can't commit to anything full-time right now. A remote plan that we're putting together, and let me just preface, every one of these plans is gonna be bargained with association. I was on a two-hour conference call with the MASs attorney and all these things. Everything that we do going forward is bargained or an MOU with the association. We have a very good collaborative relationship with our folks. They work really well with us going forward. So, we're really encouraged by the, by putting together an MOU with them to make sure when, if and when we return, however we return, our teachers are all in pace and we're all in a good spot. If we go remote, there'll be a plan in place for teachers and expectations of how many hours a day we'll do active learning or passive learning on the remote level. I will address that technology piece. We have an influx of funds. It seems like there's a lot of money coming in and I'll give you just a baseline. DESI has committed 292,000 to us as far as technology and COVID-related expenses. That's a DESI appropriation. We already have that in the bank. Senator Brady and Representative Cutler have committed $200,000 each in an appropriation. That's up on the House and Senate. I don't have those dollars. I have a dollar figure. I don't count those dollars until we get a check where we figure out how we can appropriate those monies. There is the Plymouth County Cares Grant. The Plymouth County Commissioner, commissioners have 292 or 96 million dollars to appropriate to municipalities. Frank Lyman spoke to this last week. It's supposed, or last school committee meeting, it's supposed to be $225 per pupil in our district, judging by our size of 3,800 students. That's $855,000 that should be coming to the district. However, it's not an appropriation. It's a reimbursement. So, we have to figure out what we can get reimbursed for, whether it be technology needs or virtual learning opportunities for students. So, there seems like there's a lot of money that we're gonna commit to technology. I know Ms. Byers had a question about how many Chromebooks we have. We are, I'm feeling very confident. We should be able to give each kid a Chromebook that if. We we should be able to give each kid a Chromebook, um, that if if we go remote, they should be able to take home. I'm feeling very confident in that. I don't know if they'll be here by September 8th, but I'm feeling pretty confident we will have that. The other piece that the committee has to take into consideration because because we are. We have to make sure every teacher has a has a district operating device that they can use if we are remote from home. I'm not super keen on on telling teachers they have to use their own equipment at home if they're teaching in in our school. Now, they can decline that, but I want to give them the opportunity to make sure that they have a a school-issued device. Um, that they can operate from home. That'll be part of our MOU. The other piece that we're putting out there right now is the hybrid. We have to come up with a couple of hybrid opportunities. So what's been floated around between superintendents on the South Shore, George and myself. I'll just give you, give you an idea. Uh, we have an elementary option one. Monday through Thursday. Kids arrive cohort A, so half the school comes in from 8:30 to 11:15. Lunch and prep for teachers is 11:20 to 12:40. Cohort B comes in from 12:45 to 3:30. Friday, staff will report, it will be a virtual learning day uh, for for kids. So kids would only come in Monday through Thursday in two cohorts and Friday would be day off. So I'm throwing this out there, these are just discussion pieces, but I want you guys to know what we're working with and what we're trying to do. Option two for elementary. Cohort A, Monday through Monday and Tuesday. Specialists, they they would, it would be a cohort, Monday and Tuesday, that same cohort, they come to school all day. And then they'd have Wednesday off, it would be a virtual learning day for all students. And then Thurs- when Thursday, Friday would be cohort B, they'd have a full day of school. Wednesday would be a uh, five-hour working block for people with cohorts virtual. And then that would be time for staff to prep, do PLCs and and other staff-related things, faculty meetings, professional development. Middle school option one. Uh, Monday through Thursday cohort A would be a 7:40 to uh, 10:25 cohort B 11:15 to 2 o'clock. Fridays would be their, would be their uh, day of virtual learning. Uh, the middle school option two cohort A, kind of similar to to uh, elementary except a 7:30 to uh, 2 o'clock. And then cohort uh, B would be Thursday, Friday with Wednesdays being a virtual. High school, we could do a split day, Monday through Thursday. Uh, the high school's got a lot of, a lot of flexibility in how we want to work. Um, what their, what their cohorts might be. The high school schedule's going to be the toughest to to operate. In a hybrid, or it might be the easiest to operate in a hybrid with kids just taking some remote classes uh, with their teachers. The challenge right here, right now, uh, is transportation. If we, if we go the the split day of cohort A and cohort B in the same day, that's four bus runs. Uh, I can't afford two bus runs. We calculated out that we can only put 24 kids on a on a bus. Based upon current recommendations. Uh, we usually put 48 to 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 60 kids on a bus, depending on which bus. 24 is not going to cut it. And I'll show what the what the data is from parent surveys i- in the next part of this. So we are working diligently on these options. Uh, we will have them into the commissioner by by the by the 31st. If parents have suggestions, I think I'm going to do another quick hitter survey for parents with these options to just get a get a flavor. Uh, one of the superintendents did this and it came up a third, a third, a third. So nobody's happy. But I think we want to get some parent, parent flavor. What we want to do is if we have a, i- if we have a hybrid model. To develop as much consistency for parents and expectations for parents so they could set their schedule. Again, the transportation piece is is the challenge. The daunting challenge is going to be that uh, based upon the MAS C recommendations. I'm going to throw this into your court and you're going to help decide or you're going to decide as a committee. Uh, what model we're going to use if we use a hybrid model. So that's not going to be, it's a school committee, uh, discussion, uh, recommendation. Uh, I'm not sure of the language, I don't have it in front of you from MAS C, but their recommendation is. Because the school committee kind of set the schedule for school days, you are going to assist and and vote on which hybrid model. Uh, we use. That doesn't mean that you're going to vote for all of us to come to school full-time uh, for a full day or remote. I think those decisions will be made on the ground with input from the committee. But uh, I'm going to need your, your vote, your recommendation, your support if we choose a a certain hybrid model uh, moving forward. This is, this is challenging and these recommendations, and and if you watch the paper, if again, any news media. These things change daily. The MTA has come out with their own version of a phase-in plan. And I I agree in some parts, I disagree in other parts, but overall. And and this is what I think this committee should be committed to, the health and safety of our children and our staff should be our priority. Not the economics of our of our district. We, you know, you hired myself and and Mr. Pharaoh to take care of our kids and do the best we can to educate them. But if they can't be educated if they're fearful and if they're, if they're in a not, if they're not feeling safe in their school. So we have to have a plan that works for everyone in our community, prioritizing the health and safety of our children. And we can't forget about our staff. Uh, I haven't heard a lot in the national media talking about teachers. Our teachers are 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 valuable commodity who take care of our kids. I want to make sure that we put them in a safe spot. We have an older staff. Uh, because through attrition and cuts, we've cut young folks in our, in our, in in our school district. So I want to make sure our people that are at most risk are taken care of and have the, have the proper PPE and proper training. To work around um, any potential illness or outbreaks within the, in the school. I don't have any information on questions that come out yet on what happens if there's an outbreak in a classroom. Do you, do you quarantine the class? Do you quarantine the bus? That's a work in progress. That's going to be a lot from that COVID-19 um, district-wide team. So those are things that we will be working with throughout August. So to say this is a daunting task, double that and quadruple that, not having a budget. That's the other thing that we're working with here. I've asked my school, my my teacher, my my principals, excuse me, to try to schedule the best they can based upon an approved budget. Not to react, not to, not to, to cut 40 people and develop a schedule. They have that in the back of their mind. But I'm working with numbers, assuming that the towns will support the regional district like they have in the past. And pass a budget that we don't have to cut those 40 additions. On Octo- on August 1st, if we have a meeting and we don't have a budget yet, we'll start preparing for worst-case scenario. And that might take full-time or full-time return to school absolutely off the table. It might take hybrid off the table. In some respects. If I have a classroom in Conley at 33, I can't put at six feet apart. 17 kids in a class. I can put 12. That'll be three cohorts and I don't have the staff. So the budget will drive some of the decision making of 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 the administration. And what I can actually offer the school committee, um, based upon the recommendations from Desi. Uh, the Board of Health from Massachusetts, the CDC and all of the above. And we're getting data daily. The preference that I've heard in in some communities, they're bouncing between three and six. There's no firm that, oh, we're going to try to do six. I believe the city of Boston has come out and said they're going to use six feet apart. I physically don't have the space in the s- in the regional district to put kids six feet apart for a full day. So there might be some modifications. The commissioner hasn't come out yet to say that we are on a 177 day, remember I mentioned. A meeting ago, three PDs for, three PD days for teachers. He hasn't approved that yet, that isn't set in stone, but I'm highly confident that's going to be part of that. I'm also pretty confident that he's going to be more relaxed on time on learning for everyone next year. Not, don't, don't, I hope nobody's going to go to the Globe and quote me on that, but I'm highly confident that that's going to be a consideration. But there's a lot of data coming out. I haven't, he hasn't met with us yet this week to uh, to express any new information. The one piece that we keep harping on the commissioner is transportation. As a regional school district, by law, we're required to bus kids that want to be bussed. I don't know if we can afford that. I don't know how we're going to do that. And the bus company simply said they don't have the buses for that. So that's, that's another hurdle we will pass and I will inform the committee. As 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 we plow through that hurdle or try to jump over, to go around, whatever. But that's a, it's a critical issue for me, um, on how we're going to get our kids to school. But those are the, those are the three main pieces of return. The MTA, if you, if you have, haven't uh, checked out their plan, it's out there. The commissioner has put on the Desi website an FAQ on on return, masks versus no masks. Uh, op- options for parents. This is a key piece for us administratively. Parents have the option to opt out. To go full remote. And that doesn't mean that they're homeschooling. So again, point of clarification for parents and for the committee that's out there. Homeschooling is very different than remote learning. Homeschooling is an application process to the superintendent or the assistant superintendent. That you have an approved curriculum, that you will homeschool your child. We will not take attendance for your child, we will not grade your child, your child does not uh, take MCAS and will not receive a Whitman Hansen diploma. Remote learning is going to be an opportunity for parents to say, I still want to be educated by the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. You're still, we're, we, are we just choosing to keep our child home this year? What that looks like for us right now, I don't know. The Desi has said that they are looking at a remote learning option that we can purchase uh, from the state. To administer to those kids that choose to stay home. They will still be on our rolls. But our teachers won't necessarily be responsible for the attendance and grading of those kids choosing to stay home. The 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 tweak for me in that is the commissioner also said if a parent decides to remote learn. In September, they can choose to come back to school in October. And I don't know how I'm going to fit that child into a class. On the flip side, a student that starts in September could choose to go home in remote November and then come back to school in December. So again, these are all things that we're, we're, you know, I'm trying to hit the whack-a-mole and I'm running out of quarters. So. I just, I ask people to be patient. When I say I don't know, I really truly don't know. People have asked, well, you must have a magical plan, Desi's doing this. We're get, as soon as I get it, I get it out there to you folks and to the community. Uh, we're not getting a lot of solid direction. When he, when he puts out direction, I get it out to the community. But I would encourage parents to look at that FAQ, um, and and then send me questions. I got two phone calls today. Uh, from parents about return. Hopefully this can answer some of those questions. I know there's a lot of ambiguity there, but that's the best I have right now until we put these these plans to paper, send them to Desi. Uh, if we're meeting on the 30th, I should have the plans for you to review on the 30th. I'm not going to ask you for a vote to determine where we're going to be on the 30th. But I'm assuming sometime in mid-August, we should say if we're going hybrid, if we're going live, if we're going remote. That'll be decision, you know, at least three weeks before the start of school, so parents can get an oppor- or have an idea of where we're at. I know that was a lot. Sorry, but there was, there's just a lot of information there.
Fred and Hillary.
Uh, couple points, uh, Jeff, I, uh, few things. One, I believe Allison Sullivan, our state rep, did have signed on with that $200,000 technology grant as well. If I'm not mistaken.
Yep, yes, she did.
Uh, okay, because I just want, I don't want to forget mentioning her. I know how hard she works for, for all of us.
That'll be read in, read in, the whole email will be read in uh, later on in the meeting.
Okay, uh, the other thing, on the call today with the uh, Chairman of the Senate Ways and Means. The, it was his impression that busing. If you can only fit so many kids on a bus, the additional cost for busing would be a COVID-related expense. Uh, that would be reimbursable. So, you know, that was, that came out of his mouth.
Okay.
Now, I don't know where that fits in and who runs out of money first and how we could ever collect that, but. Uh, that's what he said.
I I was going to say, that's awesome, but I still don't know if we have the buses. I mean, the bus company talked to John about that and he's like, it's going to take weeks to per- to get buses and to get drivers trained. And we share with Abington, so if we're all doubling up, doubling up runs, and I'll get to the data in a little bit. But uh, even if that's great, if we can afford that, um, super, I just don't know if I'm going to have the the wheels on the ground. So.
Sure, and I, and I just wanted to make sure we knew about that avenue. And uh, also, the Plymouth County dollars, supposedly it was mentioned that East Bridgewater has already received some funding. Uh, from that, so.
So here's the thing. The superintendent in East Bridgewater said that her, her town manager, and don't super quote me, but she kind of said in generalities. Said, we received 500 and something thousand dollars. What do you have, what do you, what do you have? Now, what do you have to spend it on? We have this. But it's a we and. What we need to be very clear with with Frank and John, and again, we have a very good partnership and we've communicated well. Is that it's not necessarily the Whitman dollars or the Hanson dollars, it's the regional school district dollars. And how that's going to be appropriated per pupil for the district. Uh, I don't think they've asked for their money yet. Uh, according to the the call I was on with the, with the treasurer of the commissioners. Only 7.2 million has been requested in Plymouth County so far. Um, out of the 94 something. They have issued it, they're issuing it in three different phases, phase one, phase two and phase three. This all has to be encumbered, uh, requested by December 2020. So, um, we're, we're going to be in the queue. My, my question for the county was, is this an al- an allocation versus a reimbursement? Because if it's an allocation and I could use it for anything, I have a lot of ideas on how to use that money. If it's a reimbursement under certain clauses that are COVID-related, that's going to restrict me. For instance, I would love to be able to, if we're in a hybrid model, be able to bring in some more personnel, not necessarily teachers, but. Support staff to give teachers preps and lunch breaks. Because if we end up having kids eat in the classroom, I run out of staff to monitor lunch. Okay, so these are the other things, building base that we're working through. But the, that staffing isn't a COVID-related expense necessarily. So we're changing mind mindset and how we can use the, that 855,000 uh, that's reimbursable. To make sure that it's benefiting the students due to, due to a remote situation or a hy- a hybrid situation. It would be better if it was an allocation, but a- according to to uh, the treasurer, it's a, it's a reimbursement.
They can just send us the balance of what they haven't spent right now.
Correct, right?
Anyone listen to that meeting today? I think the first question I heard, and I didn't see, but I heard a familiar voice and it was Fred. Anybody surprised by that? Fred was right at him.
Yep.
Hillary, then Dan, then Chris. Hillary.
Um, I just wanted to say that anybody listening or I hope everybody on the board, but knowing the Desi guidance. Is really important. Um, I think Jeff, obviously you know, but there's not a lot of answers in it. But there's a lot of things that they want you to do, but then they follow it up with, but you could also do this. I know that one of the model classrooms at Indian Head with 24 kids in it. Had two desks right up against a wall with, to maintain the three feet. So we have a child who's going to be looking, had a wall on their left and a wall right looking at them. I know, you know, that a hybrid model would be great to get the kids in, but it's nice to hear, you know, we need to worry about the children, but we also need to worry about the staff. Um, I I, you know, as a teacher myself, I don't hear a lot of that happening. The other piece, so just everyone needs to read it to see what Desi wants you to do. Um, I mean, there's talk of, you know, having children eat in the hallways, if there's not, eat their lunch in a hallway, if there's not enough space. I don't know how that's going to be beneficial to a student's mental health, quite honestly. So, you know, I, in, I, you know, every, every district is in the same boat with these things. Um, obviously ours is a little bit more unique without a budget, but um, everyone's got the same challenges. Um, I had a question, Jeff, though, on the hybrid model. I know that the commissioner hasn't um, changed any. Or given any waivers, so to speak, on time on learning. So if you're looking at the, one of the models was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a virtual day. And then Thursday, Friday for the other cohort. So if I'm in cohort A, I do school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday, I'm not doing school. Or would those be virtual days as well?
Those be virtual days with things to work on.
Yeah.
So, you know, try to get content in and then review content and maybe the teacher. And again, looking at the support staff of a check-in, if there's questions and utilizing as many people as we can. This is, this is the other, the other shift, folks, is, you know, the the commissioner has even asked us to say, look at people that aren't. That aren't necessarily licensed in the subject material. Utilize them the best you can. So if I look at, at, you know, in- in- Indian Head, a PE teacher might be teaching some math, you know? Because we need that person to fill a spot. Uh, we still haven't figured out physical education or exploratory classes. There, we have to redefine how we do chorus and music. Because uh, the commissioner had said, you know, if you're articulating words or you're singing, you're putting more particles into the air. So I might not be able to have chorus or some of the fun stuff in school. So we really have to look at and and missniff. And and Miss Niffen said the social emotional piece. I don't want any kid looking at a wall all day long. I don't want any kid sitting in a hallway eating a brown bag lunch six feet apart from their friend and not being able to talk to them. It's gonna be hard enough for kids to walk into a school um with a mask on. However, on the flip side, school's about building relationships and I fear. As a former teacher, not being able to get to know my kids on the first day of school and doing this. This is what I see. And Mr. Howard, you can introduce yourself and Mr. Cullody, you can introduce, and that's my first meeting with my kids. So we're trying to figure out the best possible scenario to have personal contact, relationships with our kids. Keeping in mind what's in their best interest, health and safety, as well as the teacher, as well as trying to give them some academics. My priority, and and this might go against, my priority for our kids is to get them back so they feel good about school again and then start school. And what I mean start school is start the academics. We're not gonna hit the ground running the first days of school. If you remember high school, the teacher gives you a syllabus and this day one, you start rolling. The first week is two of school is gonna be getting, if we're in, is getting to know each other, talking about last year. And trying to figure out comfort levels of where everybody is in school. Um, it's gonna be super important to develop those relationships. And again, the the health and safety of our kids and our teachers is the priority for me. The academics will come. I don't want to misstep as a district by trying to force feed a round peg in a square hole just because. I want to make sure we do this right. And there's so many unknowns right now that it's really difficult. And the biggest unknown for me is the fact that we don't have, I I don't have a number of of people I can work with in September. That's solid. So hopefully we can get better information as we move forward. People are encouraged by this conversation and what the, what it means to look, what the district is gonna look like without a budget. And it's not a budget that I set, and I want to be clear. I'm in a 1/12 from the commissioner. It's not Jeff's budget, it's not the school committee's budget, it's FY20 from the commissioner. And and when we talk a budget a little bit, John's gonna talk about cash flow and concerns about cash flow from the amount of money that we can actually spend per month. So, thank you, Hillary. I mean, that's, that's what we're looking at and I appreciate your comments.
And Dan Cullody.
Yeah, um, you know, some, some of this must, I'm I'm sure if we go to the um. You know, the discussion panel you're putting together, we'll find more information, but a couple of things, you know, besides Desi. You know, and the great clarifications not coming out and then not, um, you know, one size doesn't fit all. Like what they're trying to do, one size fits all school districts, which is total BS and um, does that's no good. My biggest right, and this goes back to the first time we heard it, class size, possibly a six foot, that's not doable. We know that most of us from walking through these classrooms in the summer, when we're having the tours. There's no way you're gonna fit 20 or 15 kids in those classrooms on a six-foot pace. And um, taking everything out of there, you're still not gonna meet all the expectations. So I don't see how a six foot, three foot's even. Barely gonna get us what we need to do. So we probably are looking at staggered session type deals and going hybrid. I don't see us, there's no way this district's going back in 100%. Now, for keeping kids at home, you answered a lot of it, or didn't really answer it, put another question mark on the board. If they were gonna keep their kids at home, could we take them off the list for busing? We could better balance that, but now that you're saying they could come back in, well, where it's the same thing as the mandate. With um, we have to have eight buses, even though we can only fill two with the kids and the other six have to be on standby in case. So all these still haven't been done by Desi, the state or anywhere, just gonna make your job even more harder. And I think we do have to sit down and do that panel and try to come up with best solutions. We're hearing from people with your might be, you know, because like you said, students and staff, you gotta look out for this. There's still too many variables, we'll put it, that can't be answered because nobody has a solution. And that's coming from the state. They have mandates, but they don't have solutions for these mandates. And and that's a big concern I have.
And understand too that the go- the commissioner is now working with with MTA too. And MTA came out with a pretty strong stand, and like I said before, some things I agree with, some things I don't agree with heart hardly, but. The the gist is making sure people are safe, and I think that's important for us to remember. We have 400-plus faculty, uh, or 500-plus faculty, uh, full-time teachers, paraprofessionals. You know, kitchen workers, custodial staff, I have almost 4,000 kids. That's our commitment. We have a big district and we might, we we want to make sure we give them the best opportunity to stay healthy, stay connected. And and receive an education from us. So I appreciate you, Dan, when you say this is hard. This is very hard. Um, and this is what's been time-consuming and and quite honestly, I'm losing, losing sleep over it. So is George, because we're used to being able to put forth in front of you a plan that's gonna work in place. That's how we've operated as building administrators and we've been able to put that plan forward. The first plan we came up with with six feet, that changed in a week. We came up with a three-foot plan, that might change. The, the, the other piece that came in in the recommendations is making sure your proper egresses are six feet apart. Or you have a a a six-foot passage place, which pulls desks away from doors for six feet. That blew up the plan we had in place, so we had to remeasure everything. We have, we have our um. We have two people working strictly on the engineering piece of it and really looking at a uh, at at a, at a practice piece of this. We will try to practice whatever plan we have in place in August, pseudo-dry run, to make sure everything, our I's are dotted and our T's are crossed. But it's, it's the middle of July, we still don't have some answers on on transportation and our ex- our expectations. Uh, we still don't have a a a remote learning plan from the Commonwealth that we we could use or could purchase. We have a remote learning plan that we can opt for the district. It's called Edgenuity. Uh, but if there's one that's sponsored by the state, I'd rather go with one sponsored by the state. So they were equitable with all the other districts around us. Um, the other piece is I don't want us trying to compare what we do with other districts. They're different. East Bridgewater is very different. East Bridgewater Middle Senior High School is very different than Whitman Hansen Regional High School. As well as Pembroke High School, as well as Ducksbury or Norwell. We're all different sizes, we're all different, different makeups. And there's different expectations uh and different plans coming out. So if you hear, if people have comments or concerns, I'd love to hear them. Um, if they have some ideas, we'd love to hear them. Send them through uh the folks that I mentioned or your building-based teams are your best. Because it it goes to um the building principals who have almost daily communication with me. Uh, but this is round peg in a square hole with no directions and it's dark outside. So.
Okay, Chris and Dawn.
Jeff, I just wanted to mention one question that I I hear often from people's, um, as far as being concerned about. Anything other than just a remote um scenario. Will the kids be expected to stay in one class all day? What will be like in in the hallways and and whatnot?
So, so that's, that's a really good question. So at first, the commissioner had said. Hey, you prefer elementary kids to stay in their classes, eat lunch in their classrooms with minimal passing time. Well, we got him to say we could use the cafeteria at six, with six feet apart with kids in the cafeteria eating lunch. Cause we use the analogy, well, if they're in a classroom in their masks, then they can take their masks off to eat. It kind of breaks up the purpose of why can't we all eat in the cafeteria? So we got that direction last week that we can pretend, that we can use the cafeteria. And I might be using some gymnasium space for grab-and-go lunches. Those are things that we're gonna look at. Um, middle school and high school, I don't, I can't see how we don't move classes. I might move, I might put kids at the secondary level in certain cohorts. Well, if if I'm, if I'm a kid, I'm a ninth grader, I'm taking academic ma- uh algebra, uh, English, social studies and science. I might be in a four-room area where the teacher passes and I stay in my cohort and are able to go to lunch. Uh, lockers are gonna be a challenge. So I think we're easing up on the regulation of staying in the classroom. That was initial guidance. I think we're all easing up on that passing time, moving, moving kids around. I anticipate teachers using the outdoors as absolutely as much they can. Remember, Colley has a great outdoor classroom, but using the outdoors as best they can uh to keep kids outside. We've heard about mask breaks. I don't know what mask breaks are gonna entail. I don't know where kids are gonna take their mask breaks. Um, we've been encouraged to keep windows open all the time. My first thought is awesome, except for when the bees fly in and you lose your classroom. Hillary knows, you know, as soon as a bee flies in the classroom, class is done for a half hour. You know?
Or sink.
Right, you know, the, oh, yes. I mean, these are the, all the things that are, that are going on. So Chris, I think we're gonna try to not. Keep kids in a, in an area that they just sit in a seat all day. I think some of us on this committee, me included, couldn't sit still for 10 minutes when I was in middle school or elementary school. Never mind for six hours a day without a break. So um, we're gonna, again, that's part of the plan. That we want to make sure it works well or at the best we can and the best information we can to the committee. And to parents to say this is what it's gonna look like. I have a in incoming seventh grader at middle school. I can't imagine him sitting in a chair. For the entire day with four teachers coming in and out. I I can't imagine that. And I have a a fifth grader who's in a sub-separate most of the day, but is included for a couple periods a day in elementary. And I can't imagine her just sitting in her sub-separate all day without being able to see a regular ed classroom. So I don't want that for any of our kids either. Those are my two. So I I I am an extension to the district for all those kids there. Cause I wouldn't want my kid to have to deal with some of those things. So I'm using the parent piece of me, looking at all the kids in our district as well.
Thank you.
John. And Chris.
Thank you. Um, Jeff, it's my understanding about approving the plan that's being submitted to the commissioner. Um, with the three or it's uh, three different types of learning. That the school committee would approve that that's being submitted and the decision on which one to use returning to school would come at a different time.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I did, I didn't read about the school committee plan, the plans being approved by school committee. The commissioner just said he expects the district to have three plans in place. But what I did hear was that the committee needs to determine what we're looking like when we open, what, what, what plans we're gonna be using.
Okay, my, yes, I um, I understood it that we would submit a plan. That school committee had approved and always written as subject to change, of course, you know, cause even a hybrid, we could decide, you know. Nope, it's, it's, it's gonna change. Um, what I would like to see um is really. Just circling back to the funds in the Plymouth County CARES Act funds. Um, really preparing for the extreme, which would be full remote in September. And um, I know you recognize the Chromebook question that I asked. Um, I I referred back to the Q and A document that we actually supplied, because I remember there was that question there to, so. Um, the district has 2,200 Chromebooks on hand, um, and we have 3,700 kids. So we're short 1,500. Um, if it, if it needs a motion or how we discuss. Uh, requesting these funds through the town of Whitman and and likewise Hanson. Um, to use those funds for Chromebooks and really to get our technology. I think that's our best value in the use of those funds. At this point, um, I'd also like to see um discussion and from teachers on what platforms. Online learning resources that they need to conduct remote learning. You mentioned the Edgenuity program, I'm not familiar with that. Um, but I did speak with a chemistry teacher at the high school, not our high school, and she teaches another high school. But there are specific online learning tools that she can use remotely um for teaching chemistry remotely. So um, I'm thinking that way as far as the use of these funds. I understand school committee will need to approve that spending. Um, so I'm just thinking um the best use of that.
Okay. The uh, the online platform that we're gonna, we're working with the association right now is that we have one consistent platform. For teachers to use for kids is 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 Google Classroom for the rest, for the district. We, we haven't done that. We're working with Kevin and Cindy to make sure that we use Google Classroom. So that every student K to 12 will understand Google Classroom. Ingenuity, ingenuity is actually classes that are are. So you could sign up for an ingenuity class and take that class online fully. You're not teacher-directed. So I under- the resource piece of other utilities might be out there, but I'd work with our curriculum people to make sure that we have. Uh, available learning opportunities outside the teacher-directed um. Um, le- lecture, so to speak, on a Zoom. So we will be working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jeff, you had said, one second, Mr. Boyce, you had said that you were looking for two, two school committee members for this team.
Yes, one or two.
One or two, well, I would suggest one from Whitman, one from Hanson. Do I have any volunteers?
When, what, what time of the meeting?
We haven't set that yet, Fred, but I could, I could remote you in, but they're gonna be during the day.
Okay, uh, I would, uh, I mean, I'd be willing and interested in serving. You know, unless someone else, uh, you know, expresses a great interest. Uh, I do know, you said you're meeting Monday. Monday may or may not be a conflict for me.
Sure, that's fine.
I've already started planning my week for next week.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Anyone else from Whitman? Fred, you're in, but you're on the county committees. If no one else, you're it, Fred.
Chris was next.
Dan?
No, Chris was next on the questions.
I've got Mr. Boyce.
Get through this, Bob. I had a comment unrelated to this, so get, do what you need to do.
I've got Mr. Boyce and then I'll get to you, Chris. Okay, so it looks like uh Hillary and Fred for the moment. Thank you very much, voluntary. Mr. Boyce and then Mr. Howard, and then we're gonna move on.
True, thank you. Um, Jeff, I just want to say, going back to the failure part. That's, we're here and we're here 110, 120, 200%. It, there's, i- if something fails and we know we're gonna bump into things, we know we are. We're, we're, but we're here, we're never, ever, and we're probably gonna be the hottest-working, most-connected school committee. That the district has probably ever seen, because we can't be, we can't be anything else. And whether it's you or George or Cindy or Kevin or or anyone, we want to be there and and we're going to help. So we know we're gonna have these things. Hopefully, we don't have to call them failures. But if that's the word, fine, but we're gonna work through it. And I know we will. And we're gonna be there, we're gonna be committed to you, we're staying the course, whatever we have to do. Now, you know, the traditional thing with Mr. Boyce is he usually introduces something he's done in the past. And you mentioned these hallways. I was always good at building the solar system in the hallways of the schools. Probably the most socially distant thing you could do, because the planets are so far away. But if I need to bring that education forward and keep some kids busy, I'd be certainly happy to do that. But please, the failure part is not to stress out you and George. I, I got my own sleep pattern that seems to be regardless of cats and a whole different realm and so forth. Um, you know, I got to go into work one day last week, last Wednesday. And saw a total failure on on something that I I thought for sure was going to work out just fine, and it really just frustrated me. So anyways, I don't have a resolve on that, but that was my failure. And I'm learning from that and we're gonna learn and we're gonna be there. We're not going anywhere. We're here to help.
Thanks, Steve. And and as a school, I've always told kids, you know. Schools are the place that you sometimes do fail, because then you can learn from those, those mistakes. And that's what school is. That's what we do every day. So this is an opportunity for us to try some different things and I I I will keep reminding you to think outside the box. And opportunities to become better than traditional. Um, so if, once we get kids in, we're gonna be working on things to make sure we can better our craft. For our teachers and for our kids moving forward. So it's an opportunity um to, to have successes as we go through this. This, this timeframe. I just want the, you know, and I, I, this is very difficult. This is a really ju- cha- challenging time for everybody in my office and at the principal level. Cause principals are usually, they're responsible for their kids and they, they feel it in their, in their gut. And in their soul for their teachers and their kids. And you know how committed our principals are. And they're struggling because they don't have answers for their teachers and for the kids that they see. You know, kids want to know what's coming back. My own two are saying, what's school look like, Dad? You're supposed to know this stuff. And I, I can't give them any answers, because I don't, I don't know. Uh, and that's really difficult. And it's personal for me, because I don't know. And as I do know, I will let folks know. So I appreciate that support, Steve. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris Howard.
Yeah, so uh, Mr. Boyce couldn't agree more. I think they're called learnings, not failures. So right there with you. We'll learn together. Um, so just real quick, uh, we talked about making sure we take care of our students. And our staff, which I couldn't agree with more, not to be lost in this, should be uh keeping the eye on our parents. Cause I am very worried, given everything that's going on. Uh, what that's gonna look like, especially when we start to talk about hybrids. especially when we start to talk about hybrids. And I also look at it through the lens of an employer. And there are a lot of employers that are talking about bringing folks back to the office sometime after the summer. So there's kind of a perfect storm of, we've got to prioritize the education of our students, but, but I am a little concerned about, wait a second, kids are going to school half days, parents are trying to juggle. And so where I'm going with all this, Jeff, I think you talked about doing a survey. You might get a third, a third, a third, but I think there's tremendous value in doing that survey if nothing else is just starting to get parents thinking about, well, what do you mean? What, what is that gonna look like? So hopefully, they can have some conversations with their employers. Employers can also figure out, how do we make this all work? So if you can just please consider doing that, I think that'll be really helpful.
Absolutely, Chris. And one thing else I wanted to add, and this kind of occurred to me as a, as a light bulb the other day, because all I can think of is remote learning in April and May when we were under full quarantine too. If we end up in remote or even a, with a hybrid or a remote and we're not in quarantine, that doesn't mean our kids can't have some sort of social life outside of school. In April and May, we couldn't. There was no ball, there was no soccer. So that dawned on me like, hey, if we do remote and I can have the Y in for aftercare or something, there might be an opportunity there. In April and May and June, we didn't have that opportunity. So we're thinking about that as well. But Chris, thanks for reminding me about the parent because I, I think you're 100% right. That's the worry in my household right now with a wife who's a teacher and me who's a superintendent. What do we do if we go hybrid at home? So that's, that is absolutely a conversation piece in my house. So I will, I will solicit information from, from the district parents as well and caregivers. Thank you.
Thank, go ahead, Hillary.
All right, I just wanted to add one more thing. I think that everybody listening, watching, however everyone's accessing this, you know, opening schools, opening school buildings, because I want to maintain that schools weren't closed March, April, May and June, like schools were open, the buildings were just closed, right? But opening these buildings and putting people in these buildings is going to be the largest gathering in Massachusetts since March of people. I think there's a lot of irony to be had when, you know, we're having virtual meetings, making these decisions. And I just think that, you know, parents, like Jeff, same thing, you know, two educators in the house, three kids, what are we gonna do? We just all need to be patient and understand that we can't rush into decisions because this is just what's gonna work and, you know, whatever about the repercussions down the road, repercussions down the road. You know, these are, you know, if I'm in a classroom or if there's a teacher in Whitman Hanson in a classroom and I have 20 kids in that room, you know, it's not eight per 1,000 square feet or whatever the guideline is right now. So I think that we need to keep that in mind when, and I know parents are like, I want to know, I want to know, kids want to know, you know, but we need to really keep that in mind that these will, this will be the biggest gathering indoors of anybody since March. And that's a big deal. So just keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
We good, we good to move on?
Yes.
Thanks, folks, for all that input. I appreciate it and I encourage more input, again, from, from the community that's out there. I would address questions to your building principal and their COVID team if you're not on it. And those, those questions for district wide come to me. And, but if you feel like you need to call or shoot me an email, that'd be absolutely appropriate. The remote learning survey, return to school survey, 1,108 people responded to that, which is pretty outstanding, pretty good mix from all the community. If, I think this is in your packet. You look at the, the majorities of areas we need to work on. Do you have a device for each child in your household to engage in? 65% said we have at least one device for each child. Dawn, I think the area we look at is, you know, the green area or the, or the, we don't have a device at home for your children. We want to make sure that we have devices for our kids. Was your internet reliable during remote learning? The majority said yes. We can work with families if they have no remote access, if we end up remote or hybrid. One question, are there adults at home to help navigate remote learning? 70, almost 80% said yes. 17 said no, we have to worry about the noes to make sure that those students have some sort of, of help when they're, when they're home, if we are fully remote. Hours of the day ranged from, on, on how much remote learning, this is an area we will work with the association to make sure it's a little bit more consistent, range from a little under an hour to, to six hours a day. I was hoping no student was working six hours a day on remote learning. That wasn't an expectation in the district. And again, we'll work with the association to make sure it's a little more unilateral and a little bit more scheduled for our kids. Given the current constraints and, and in the, in the district for online meeting time, did we meet it? Yes, the online meeting time with teachers and classmates was adequate. 46%, 50% said no, they want more meeting time. I heard that quite a bit and I agree with that and I think that's a goal for us. Let's see. What page am I on? Did I, I just?
21.
Yeah, sorry, I missed it. Remote learning. Given the current situation and constraints where the assignments and activity right with rigor, 62% said the right amount. 7% said much too rigorous, that was not the goal. And then too little rigor. And I think that's where we got caught when the commissioner kind of gave an ambiguous, ambiguous answer, an ambiguous answer, excuse me, on you're not grading kids, you just want kids to perform. And I think we got lost. We did the best we could. And I'm gonna say our teachers did the best they could. So we will improve that in the fall. Given the current situation and constraints, we'll level a personal connection with teachers and classmates was adequate. 43% much too disconnected, 55% much, or the right amount. I think the disconnect, that's almost a 50/50. I think we needed to connect better with our kids and our teachers. Given the situation and constraints, was a level of school home communication satisfactory? 75% said yes, 20% said too little, we need to do better in that as well. These are the keys for me outside of the remote learning. Do you anticipate sending your kids back to school other, if anything, other than traditional opening, a traditional opening? 66% said yes, 30% or 31%, I'm not sure. That's a big number for me. Even out of the 1,100, that's, that's 300 people or 300 children. And then what, what is your transportation plan for your children? 60% said they're taking the bus. So that becomes the other challenge for us moving forward. 40% said they'll have their own. And it might shift too, depending on how many kids can be on a bus. So that's our baseline and that's what we're working with. And I think that's pretty concise from the, just the, the conversations I had with some parents and I had some conversations with some kids. And I know some high school kids were online for six hours a day and I know some kids in high school that weren't allowed for 15 minutes a week. So that's something we will fix. And again, working with Kevin and Cindy, they, they, I, they know this. We've talked about this since March. They've asked us to make sure there's clear expectations from the administrative side that will work with the teacher side to make sure that we have an adequate school day for our kids, especially if we're fully remote for next year. So that's the result, the results of our survey. You can toss those around too. If you have questions, let me know. I will follow up with another quickie, sometimes, sometime the end of next week after we talk in our COVID team, get some relevant information out there for some parents or questions that we can help build the, the schedule around or what the fall looks like again.
Questions, anyone? Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. So the last piece here is kindergarten preschool tuitions. So what I'm looking for the committee is some guidance here. As you know, last year, we, we collect money for preschool tuitions outside of the mandate number of special education students that we have to service pre-K, three to five. And then we collect for full day kindergarten. I, I need this committee to, to make a decision whether or not if we go remote or hybrid, that we collect tuitions throughout the course of the school year next year and not stop tuitions. As you know, last year, we stopped tuitions. I asked the committee to refund tuitions, which left me at a deficit. Not knowing what next year looks like, I'm basing my staffing levels on current tuition, tuition obligations. Moving forward, if we go hybrid for a month, or if we go remote for a month, I probably could, could, could live without the tuitions. But if we go remote for three or four months, I don't know if I'm gonna have the revenues to be able to reimburse parents. And our pre-K and our K students were receiving instruction, they were receiving connections with teachers. The one area in preschool, and I'll give Jill Kane a shout out, her parents were, were out, said that the level of commitment or the level of connection that Jill's students had was outstanding and they were very upfront about that. And that's a preschool self, self-contained classroom. So we need to make sure we have those for our kids if we're committed to all kids, pre-K to 22. We need to make sure we continue that level of service to them, whether or not they're tuition based or not. However, my budget is, is dependent, or my, my staffing levels are dependent upon tuitions. So the committee needs to make a decision. They, they don't have to make a decision today, but, but our first tuition payments due August 1st. So I have to let parents know whether or not they're gonna opt out of full day K or they're gonna be expected to pay tuitions for the course of the year.
Ian, you're first, then Fred, then Dawn.
Yeah, Jeff, with this pre-K K, it likely wouldn't be held in a classroom, right?
What do you mean? Like?
Kids be in a classroom? How do you contain that?
Yeah, so we will, we will, one of the, the direct, the, the thoughts is we want to get our earliest kids in at, at, at least half a day or something to get them socialized to school. The later they, they don't come back, that, that more of a challenge, they're gonna have to, to get to, into a school routine. So if we're coming back, even in a three or six foot, the goal is gonna be to try to, to, to get them in. And again, if it's six foot, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to offer full day K. But what I'm looking at here is, right now, we have a tuition commitment. And last year, we did a reimbursement. I don't know, and I'm just letting the committee know, I don't think I can do a reimbursement next year with revenues. We will, we will run into a deficit if I have to maintain the, the current level of staffing and I'm not receiving any tuitions. But the goal would be to get the kids integrated in preschool, especially in the self-contained classrooms, or not, in the, for the kids that are on IEPs, we have to educate them somehow. So that's a non-negotiable. The tuitions helped offset the cost of the preschool experience because it's a lower ratio of, of students to, to, to teachers.
Yeah. It's, it's not in the budget, so we'd have to have a tuition, unfortunately. My concern was this, that many kids, you know, IEPs included and all that, would you have to have more staff to manage the focusing part where, you know, they're kids, they're gonna?
Yep. So we're, we're, again, looking at guidelines, I'm not sure if we're gonna add additional staff. I, I haven't been super focused in on the, the, the pieces in preschool. I'm more concerned about the finances of preschool right now. And that's what I'm delivering to you folks right, you know, today, before those first parents make a tuition payment and they decide, look, if the school's gonna commit to, I want full day K because we're gonna try to run a full day program at some point, I want to pay that tuition, I want a spot for my child. But if the school's not gonna reimburse me if they go hybrid or remote, I, I want to pull my child out and I just want them in a half day, half day program. That's the information I need, the direction I need from the committee.
Okay. Fred and Dawn and then David.
Two comments. Uh, one, can we consider at least look into the fact that this could be a COVID related expense? You know, if we end up having to do remote, but we, we can't, we necessarily, you know, keep the money, you know, the people who paid for tuition, could that be considered a COVID related expense? You know, that's number one. And, and/or number two, are you seeking us to perhaps make a decision to do what we say we don't want to do 100% and that's just go to a half day program? And that's all we could offer this year, should we be in a remote learning situation?
So the answer to question number one, John is shaking his head, no, but we can look into that. So we will, but he's, his, his gut says no. And number two, that'll probably be a decision that I'm gonna bring forth to you on the 31st or the 30th of July at our next meeting and say, look, based upon our plan, I don't know if we're gonna be able to offer a full day K program. You know, I'm not sure. I'm still gonna need the, the, the teachers because we might be splitting those full day programs into two sessions. Or really four, four, you know, the full day kids will, will go into, depending on how many kids we can have in a classroom, I might need two teachers for that. So that might be one of the, one of the issues that we have to discuss on the 30th. I just wanted to get this out there to you. And again, you can marinate on this for two weeks and get some feeling, but this is a, this is an issue for me. And I brought this up again about the reimbursements in, in April. And I knew this was gonna be an issue going forward if, if we didn't have a solid plan. And if there was an op, a chance and, and gauging upon what everybody says is we're gonna have another surge at some point, we're gonna end up in remote. And I don't want to be caught with, with a discussion in the middle of November with parents saying, how come I'm not getting 100, you know, my tuition's back from November to, to January? And we run into a budget crunch. So I just want, I want the committee to know that that's an issue I have and we can, we can decide it moving forward. But you're right, Fred, I might go to a half day, I'm not sure yet. That's a question mark out there because I don't know if I have the space or the teaching capacity on the basic, on the first, with, with the tuition revenues that I'm getting to add additional sections.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, Fred, that's a good point about maybe needing to move to half day, which is devastating because by not offering universal full day K program, you know, it's, it's difficult, it's, parents may look elsewhere. Jeff, do we know how many are registered at this point to potentially pay full day K tuitions on August 1st?
I, I don't have that right now.
Okay. Okay. And so I guess the other alternative would be with a payment for a full day K program, is it possible to add a line to the registration of a waiver of any request for a refund? So the parents acknowledging to that?
Once I get the direction from the committee, I would do that. I would notify parents the, the next day that there's been a modification and, and let them re-decide and maybe expend, extend the first payment past August 1st. We, we can be flexible. We're not starting school till April or till September 8th now. So, but that's why I wanted to bring it up at this meeting. Because I think it's a, it's a, it's a decision that we have to make as, as a, as a school committee because it will impact parents financially and it might impact on their daycare situation at home.
Right. Thank you.
David?
Jeff, quick question, is full day K tuition 3,200?
Off the top of my head, I thi, I think so.
Okay, so, yeah, so my concern is if you're a parent and you're over in Whitman Hanson, why would you pay 3,200 for your kids to stay at home if we're doing remote learning or if we're doing hybrid when they could go over to Rockland or they could go over to Brockton and get it for, completely for free? And another issue I have is parents were reporting to me that their kids were, you know, four or five, you know, having remote learning sessions, they have trouble sitting in and focusing. So if we're not having, you know, that face-to-face teacher to student, you know, emotional, social interaction, I mean, what benefit is it to these kids to be in full day K? And especially if parents still have to worry about, you know, daycare or, you know, coming home early from work, if they're going back to work and things like that. So I guess my issue is, you know, if we make it 32, 3,200, we have the full tuition. I mean, who's going to pay for it? Who's gonna want to send their kid to full day K? One, again, if it's remote learning, then go do student choice and go somewhere else.
So the school choice piece, I'm not sure how many new students, other communities are gonna accept in kindergarten right now because they're, they're having the same problem we have with staffing. So I don't know if, if, if some of the schools are going to be looking at adding students, especially in the elementary level where they don't have that. So I, it's an absolute concern. We've talked about this in the past, that's where we're losing our students, but I'm not sure this year. But I, I think you're 100% right. Why would I pay if I'm gonna be half day? So I think that's a decision that the committee has to, has to make to tell me where, where, what direction you want me to go. We base a lot on finances. I base staffing decision on finances. We base our staff on, on the revenues that we will collect in kindergarten, which tends to run pretty accurate. So it's a self-sufficient entity. Pre-K is always a deficit just because of our sped population and we have to service those kids. And, and we can talk about preschool and special education in our next meeting, but Dave, I think you're absolutely 100% right. That's why I'm bringing this to the committee so you can make an informed choice moving So you can make an informed choice moving forward and give our parents that month or month and a half to make a decision. We offer, I think at minimum, we offer half-day K. You know, and we don't cut that whole program. But parents can choose not to send their kids to our kindergarten program as well. It's not a requirement by the state. We offer it because I think it's good for our kids and it gets them moving. But I also, I hear your, your point and I concur. I don't know if I'd want to spend $3,200 with the opportunity. However, that being said, I'm not going to be able to re-enroll you in November in, as a full-time K student, if, if we do run it and I, I staff it differently. You'd go on a waiting list for somebody to drop. So there's a pro and con on both of those. But I think that's an excellent question and it's something for the committee to consider.
Yeah, one more question, Jeff, too. So, I mean, with these young kids, if they're doing remote learning, how are we going about, you know, identifying their needs, addressing IEPs, helping them get their individualized needs, you know, addressed and things like that?
That, that's up to their teacher and their building principal. So I think as we did in the, in the spring, it was pretty challenging. You know, as, as a parent of a special education child, or actually two of them, there were, there were certain issues there that, that were, were not great. And we were able to provide feedback to both the teacher and, and the building administrator on that. So when we went out, it was, it was triage. We did the best we could. I think we'll, we'll do that better. But I think when you're talking five and six-year-old, or three, four and five-year-olds, six-year-olds, that's the most challenging time to make sure that they're getting something at home. And that's why the ideal would be to bring them in, even if they're on a different schedule than high school. If we could bring elementary and pre-K and kindergarten in, other than other, other grade levels. So that's another conversation, talking point that we will have in our teams to see how we can maybe modify. It's not a one, and somebody mentioned this, this isn't a one-size-fits-all for all of us. High schools might be going more remote, elementaries might be going more live. So that's the other challenge that we have to make sure that they're getting the best opportunities they can with a teacher and developing that relationship, student-teacher relationship at the earliest grade levels.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Brad?
And Jeff, would it be reasonable to assume that if we had to go remote learning, you know, all of a sudden in the middle of the year because of spikes, wouldn't other school districts locally be in the same position, the same predicament?
So, so what we've been told by the commi- as the South Shore superintendents, I'm going to say an easy yes. But as things go, community, community, superintendents are at the, the guise of their school committees. The commissioner has said he would like 80 to 90% of the state doing the same thing. And if there are spikes to 10%, to 5%, and I use the, you know, the Chelsea, Chelsea was a hotspot. Chelsea might be remote. North Adam might be a cold spot because they haven't had a case. They might be full in three feet apart. We might be anywhere in that. But I would bet if there's a spike in this area, that the South Shore superintendents, and we're a pretty collaborative group, we would all matriculate to the same thing. We had the discussion around the hybrid models to make sure that we all have some similar hybrid models so that people weren't comparing Pembroke's hybrid to Silver Lake's hybrid to, you know, East Bridgewater and West Bridgewater hybrid. West Bridgewater has 1,200 kids in the district. And I have close to 4,000. Our hybrid's going to be very different. And their class sizes are very different. So we try to keep the same, but you, you are right. And I think that'll be determined. I mean, there's a lot of social media posts out there too, saying, you know, you know, let, let data and not fear take, take over. We haven't had major spikes in this area. Brockton was a hotspot for a while, but their cases are down. Whitman and Hanson really haven't had a lot of cases, but that doesn't mean that we're right next door to Brockton. And people shop and go in the same places as, as other communities. So we're in pretty good contact with each other. And I would say that, yeah, we would probably be all in the same boat, but, but that's not a definitive.
Thank you.
Hillary.
I just had a question. So if, if we start the year in the building and it goes remote, would the expectation be that full-day kindergarten students are getting a different remote learning schedule than half-day kindergarten students? I know I had a kindergartner this past year. And it seemed like they were all, you know, the learning guard just went out. But again, it wasn't, you know, we were teaching by the seat of our pants. So. But would that be something to consider? And then the idea that if you are in full day K, maybe you do have a bit of a, I mean, I don't necessarily know what the difference is when they're in the building. But something, some sort of change in their schedule where, you know, to David's point, like, why would I pay for that? Well, I'm paying for it because I'm getting something. And, and that could be something to consider. I do like the idea of a waiver. I know that parents that there are various, a variety of reasons. I have friends who chose half-day kindergarten because they didn't think their kids were ready for full-day kindergarten. I think that there are parents who are on both sides of this piece. But I, I think maybe if, if we do go remote, if there's a plan to offer something more for those who are paying for full day and if there's staff to do it, that could be a way to, you know, kind of get around the reimbursement issue perhaps.
Absolutely agree. And I think that's the conversation at that elementary level with the principals to say, okay, this is, this is going to be our plan. Again, building-based plan through this on reopening and what it looks like for each grade level and what does that mean for our tuition kids? You know, so I think you're, you're 100% right. So we'll look into that. And I think that's part of that overall plan that's presented here. And again, making, letting the committee make that decision. Here, here, this is what we have to offer and, and see, see, see how it flushes out.
Dawn?
So Jeff, the three plans of remote, hybrid, or full opening, sounds like it's a district-wide decision. But a little to Hillary's point, is it possible to have a, a hybrid of those plans where maybe preschool, kindergarten, because you can fit those, they would stay? Full opening in school and other grades in high school could be remote learning? If you have the space in the pre-K and the K to keep them?
A lot of mo- yes, a lot of moving parts. I mean, those are the things that we're trying to, trying to figure out. And we're trying to still figure out who's going to come back. So I think when I say 40% of the, of the people responded or 30% of the people responded, I'm not sure. Out of the 1,000, if I triple that because there's 4,000, I'm looking at 1,000 kids aren't coming back. We might be able to go, full go, because I have 1,000 less kids in the district. So I think those are the things that we're trying to consider. But yeah, I, I mean, absolutely, there will be hybrids of hybrids. These are just initial drafts to see how we can actually put together a schedule. And again, I'm going to preface this. This is with a full staff. This is with our budget of $55 million. If I'm in a 1/12, I, I, I'm not sure. I just shake my head and, and loosely. That's, I'm not sure what I'm going to do with a reduction in, in 40-plus people. So, and I want to preface this in a, you know, even if we go and George was doing the rough numbers because he's a math, he's that guy. I mean, we're adding, if, if, we probably could use 10 more staff members if we are bringing kids back. Because we will be using spaces, you know, if, if I have a classroom, an elementary classroom of, of 25, and there, there's four, four sections of 25, I can only put 22 in a class. I need another teacher for those, those kids. So that's another challenge that we have. And trying to see, and I mentioned before, other people in areas of certification might be pinching in to do things that are outside of their normal day-to-day operation. So a lot of moving parts, folks. You know, stay patient, stay tuned, and, and we'll roll this out as best we can. And what I've learned most is that things change daily. So I, I, you know, from the state level, from the net, from the national level, I know there's pressure from the Nash, from the feds to open up. I know Massachusetts is taking a pretty firm stand and we're not going to open up until we're, we're ready to open up. And, and we, we got a pretty solid education system, but I don't want people to forget that kids' health and safety and teachers' health and safety are our priority. And if we can't, even if hybrid, remote, whatever we're doing in person, shift this, shift that, we have to make sure that everybody feels comfortable and feels safe in the learning environment that we provide them.
As you can see, ladies and gentlemen, whether it be school committee members, teachers, parents, there are a lot of moving parts to a school district and especially add COVID-19 and all the things that we're talking about and the might-be's and the could-be's and the synopsis of it's, it's going to be open, is school going to be remote, is school going to be hybrid? If you looked in the, I think it was in the newspaper, that the Los Angeles School District, half of it is going to be closed already going forward in September. So it, it's a stay tuned type of agreement and, and the superintendent and all the questions from all of us have been trying to come up with some solution, but please stay tuned because it's going to change. Boise, is your cat going to all day K?
There's the, there's the baby panther.
Okay, Jeff, next unfinished business?
Yeah, so the feasibility study.
Feasibility study. In your packet, you'll see that you have the study with the questions and the answers. The potentials of what's going on with MSBA and how it's going to move forward. I know that I believe three of you are on the committee. Is that correct, Michelle?
Joe?
Yep, that would be Mr. Small, Mr. Colletti, and Mr. Scrivener on that building committee.
And Jeff is going to be on. So Jeff, the first meeting been scheduled?
Not yet. No, we have to submit who's on the committee. And Michelle, who did Mr. Lyman send forward from the, from the selectmen yesterday?
So he notified us today that Randy Lamatina from the Board of Selectmen, Lisa Green, the Assistant Town Administrator, John Galvin from the Finance Committee, and Robert Curran, the Building Inspector or Commissioner. Were appointed last night.
Okay, so we're still have to fill a couple of their needs on that committee. So we're going to be reaching out to folks to volunteer for that. But in your packet, what we put together is a, is a feasibility study Q and A that we'd like to submit to the town moderator as a pass out at town meeting. There's not going to be a, 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 I work with Frank and the town moderator for the, for the town meeting out on the, on the JV baseball field. We've been working pretty good together. I think it's going to be a, an interesting town meeting. First time, you know, I want to say under the lights, but they are going to have portable lights there. But we, they, they're not going to be able to do presentations on a, on a big screen. So we'd like to give this out if it's okay with the moderator. I just wanted the committee to have a, a rough idea of what this is. If they, if we speak to this, I will highlight pieces of this, and then I'm going to let Mr. Pharaoh, who experienced that building for 15 years, highlight the needs of that building. And then we will highlight also the, the, the MSBA acceptance that we were accepted the first time around. And I think there's a tremendous need for a new building and it's unusual for, for a district to be brought in the first time in the first queue. So this is something that we just wanted to show you that we're going to ask the moderator to, to be able to pass out to everybody at town meeting. So we hopefully get an approval to move forward with feasibility.
Mr. Boise, you had a question? You're muted, Steve.
It's okay.
So I was going to say, I, I think Dawn was interested but wasn't sure. And if she's not able to, I don't mind if we still need to fulfill a school committee person on the.
I think, Steve, we have enough school committee people. I think they're looking for a couple more people at large. So anybody that might be watching tonight's meeting might consider getting on a building committee. I've been on a couple. One of them was a local one in Hanson. And obviously the other one, I was on the school committee at the time and, and jumped into the building committee meetings. And it's, you learn a lot when you get on a building committee. It's, it's something that's very educational and it, it gives you a lot of insight. It gives you the feeling that you're part of it. So if somebody from Whitman should choose to want to get on, get a hold of Frank Lyman, the Town Administrator, and put your name in and see if you can get on, because I guess we're a couple, couple members short. Dawn?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I don't think anyone knows that building inside and out more than George Pharaoh. But would Ernie be attending also? I know he also submitted the SOI, you know, he's worked on that too, can speak to the equipment.
Ernie will be at a town meeting. Yeah, he'll be at a town meeting, absolutely.
Okay, great.
And, excuse me, Chair?
I'm sorry.
Just wanted to, I believe there are people with particular qualifications we're looking forward to fill the void. I believe perhaps an architect or some with some architectural or engineering background.
Yep, Chair Hayes. Yep, excuse me, we have already reached out to a couple of community members that qualify for the building committee. So we're waiting to hear back from them.
Okay, and to Fred's point, I think a couple of them are what exactly what you're talking about, Fred.
And the other comment that I had within this slide where it says heating units in the building are far past their useful life and need to be replaced. Perhaps another sentence with that bullet saying that they, you know, the building was built during the energy crisis or the oil embargo era in 1972. And it's all electric heat and they were originally designed for 400, 440 electric, which those cables are still live and underneath the concrete of that building. They can't, and they can't service the electrical panels even. I think those types of bullet points might be of use as well. And not to get, you know, super long, but keep it short and condensed.
Yep. Thanks, Fred.
Remember, I remember to the left on the way in the hallway, we had an issue one time. You remember? The entrance. Okay. Dan, did you?
No, just got to volunteer Mr. Boise's cat if he knew how to do electrical plumbing.
Okay, next subject, school budget discussion. Mr. Small's asked me if he could be heard first. He's, he's got a statement that he'd like to make to maybe put some clarification to some things. Brad?
Thank you, Chair. Going back and, you know, we've been dealing with the assessment issue all year long. And there's been finger pointing back and forth by both towns to one resident or another. And this has, the residents of our towns bear no burden in this. Proxims in 2016, I was approached by a Whitman resident who felt that Whitman was paying $300,000 to $400,000 too much annually in our budget. I did bring that concern to the chair, who later informed me that it was a swinging number and minor in a $50 million budget. And that's what he had gotten back from whoever he had checked with. I relayed this back to the resident along with the advice that the superintendent would be the best person to reach out to. And for some reason I have stuck in my head, I thought that was something to do with transportation. In 2017, 2018, we had a regional amendment committee. Mars was hired to redo our agreement at that point. It was told to the committee that they would be making the amended agreement legal for today's standards. And being back in 17, 18 and changing perhaps some language. I know myself and I know a few others run that committee that still sit here today. I would encourage everybody to go back, watch the meetings and draw your own conclusions as to some of the verbiage that was used, especially, you know, today. I think it was March of 2019, a Whitman selectman asked me if the district was using the statutory method or the alternative method in determining the assessment to the towns. I emailed the Director of Business Services the question. And while I didn't get a response back, quote unquote, "quick enough", I called the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, ODSI, and I asked them the same question. While I was waiting for the answer, I did receive an email back from the business manager stating that we used statutory method. When DSI came back on the phone, they said the same thing, you use statutory method. I left a voicemail for that selectman informing him of this. Shortly thereafter, we were in a selectman's meeting that I was attending. The subject came up again and I went to the podium publicly and reiterated what I was told. Over the following months, it was determined, and I'm not sure exactly who did the physical math. Many people did have input, you know, but it was determined that the statutory method was never being used. The administration did open an investigation and the business manager was placed on leave in September. Over the next few months, there was a lot of discussion about the methods, the impact. We had a presentation from a DSI representative. The discussions over the methods and compromise as well as their impact, they continue right up until this day. In January of 2020, we were in executive session. The minutes have been voted on and I believe the meeting can be discussed now. The school committee was informed. Uh, the school committee was informed that an agreement had been reached. The business manager would continue to be paid, and my recollection was either March 1st or April 1st. Uh, I believe the end date was March 31st. Uh, and would agree not to disparage the district, and the district would agree not to disparage the person. Uh, the district, if asked for a reference, would only supply dates of employment. Uh, when we were told this, uh, I did strenuously object to any, uh, type of agreement. Uh, our towns have been partners for many years. And this is a, uh, situation that I think we've got to, you can't blame one town or the other. Uh, there was talk at a selectman's meeting last night of turning everything over to an Attorney General and letting them do an investigation. Uh, this was a prior administration. Okay, we need to be trans- uh, transparent as possible. We need to be forthright with the public, and we need to find some way to all come together, uh, because we have a lot of children's lives at risk, and their education's at risk, and education is life. Uh, so that's what I wanted to say this evening, and I kick myself in the rear end, uh, that I wasn't sharp enough in the past in, uh, sitting at that 2017, 2018 RAC committee when languages were changed, et cetera. Uh, and I offer citizens of both towns, at least for myself, my sincerest, uh, I did the best, absolute best I possibly could. I'm a volunteer, and I will never, ever go by what the word of people that we have in our administration, when they say something, uh, "Trust but verify", I think is my new motto in my head. So, thank you. And Chair, thank you for the time.
You're welcome. Okay, Jeff, budget discussion.
So, the, uh, I'm actually going to turn it over to John for a quickie. Uh, he's got, uh, some information on cash flow. And, uh, you know, we're in a 1/12th, and I can only spend, uh, what I have. So here's John.
Thank you. Uh, we've talked a lot about the 1/12th budget, and since our last meeting, a couple of things have happened. Um, one is we officially have the 1/12th budget now, and just recently, we got the information about how we are to compute assessments. And the 1/12th budget is going to be based on exactly what we spent as a budget in 2020. So it comes out to be $4,000, $4,368,000 a month. However, the assessments will be based upon the revenue assumptions that we use when we put together our FY21 budget. So now that we've got those directions, we can, we can tell the town what the, what the assessments will be. Um, we've been talking about cash flow and, and, and spending, and just to give a little more information about that, um, it's really not as much cash flow as it is, if we were a private business, we'd talk about burn rate. How fast do we go through our money? What, what, um... How does this constrain what we do? Uh, $4 million sounds like an awful lot of money, and it is. However, the, the first warrant that we processed for fiscal '21, and we just opened fiscal '21 recently, is just over $2.1 million. Now, that's unusual. It's unusual because we're paying a lot of annual bills. Some are subscription fees for technology products that we use. One is the, the assessment we get from Plymouth County for everybody, uh, but teachers. Teachers are part of the Mass Teachers Association, Mass Teachers Retirement System, for which we pay no, no expense, but non- licensed people, um, that assessment is $1.2 million. We've paid the annual premium for property and casualty insurance. It's about $238,000. So there's some very large numbers. But to put that in perspective, if we were paying teacher salaries, a, a teacher payroll, um, runs about $1.5 million. So pretty quickly, we would, we'd be in the point of having to prioritize what bills got paid this month and what would get paid next month. And so, uh, we just wanted to make you aware of that's, that's, that's the issue. Um, we certainly don't expect to have any issues through July and August, but once we start to get into September, if we're still in the 1/12th budget, um, we're going to have to be thoughtful about, uh, how we move forward and maybe talking to the state about some form of relief. Uh, today, I spent some time with David Leary, who's our treasurer. Uh, he has a, some institutional memory about what the, what the warrants are, how they run, and put, we're putting together that cash flow that tells us what our needs are, and we're going to measure that against what we actually spend and see how it, see how it balances out. Our expenditures or what we can spend each month is cumulative. That, by that, I mean, we have an allotment for July. If we don't spend all of that, that's fine, because now we add the August allotment to it, and that's the total amount that we can spend. So we're, we're going to have to manage our, our, our revenue and, and our expenditures, uh, more carefully than we normally do.
Questions, anyone? Chris Howard?
John, thank you for that. So are, are there any... I, I guess you probably want to, I think we all want to continue to be optimistic and support the budget process, um, to kind of move us beyond 1/12ths. Um, have you, that notwithstanding, have you looked at what are some of those maybe one-time expenses that would potentially, outside of payroll, that would hit in September, October, November, um, in terms of really impacting us to a negative cash flow position? Or you kind of, are you, are you, are you waiting a bit to see kind of how that goes?
We're going to wait a bit to see how that goes. But again, the, the issue has more to do with what do we have to spend than, than, than revenue coming in?
Okay.
So it's burn, it's burn to capital.
Right, and I know as a, as a, unlike a business, it's not like we have a line of credit where we can just go draw from to manage the cash flow issue, right? So this, this becomes a problem for us.
And again, it's not necessarily how much we're getting in income, it's how much do we have to spend? Because in a normal, in a normal time, this, um, we look at the total, the total budget over 12 months, and then cash flow becomes the issue. Do we have the money in the bank to meet the bills that we have? Between getting Chapter 78 every month, we get 12 payments, and the four payments we get from our member communities, and the, and the time that we get them, first payment being due in August, um, cash flow really hasn't been an issue, or income hasn't been an issue in the past. This is a very different time that we have now.
Fred, then Dawn, thank you. Fred?
And just, just to clarify, uh, we cannot deficit spend, correct?
Um, we can't deficit spend, that's correct. Um, but in, in, that's correct. We can't deficit spend.
But we can borrow, we, could, could we borrow money against anticipated revenues?
We have the ability to, we have the ability to issue revenue anticipation notes. Um, and in fact, at, at, that, that's something that happens. The issue that we're looking at, though, isn't so much how much can we, can we get in terms of revenue? It's how much can we spend and what are our actual commitments for expenditures? So when we start to meet teacher payrolls, um, those are, those are large sums of money that happen twice every, every 14 days. Um, and then the district's, um, uh, health insurance bill is also pretty healthy. Those are the things we deal with as well.
Thank you.
One, before we go to Dawn, one of the problems of this stuff is, if you borrow RANs, Revenue Anticipation Notes, and the revenue falls short, it's like writing a check without having the balance and checkbook in the bank. The check bounces, correct?
Absolutely. Uh, when, when that, when that revenue anticipation note comes due, there is a, the total expectation that you're going to have the money to pay it off. Um, although again, uh, and I, I probably haven't been clear, this is not an issue of trying to balance, um, over the long run, revenue and expenditures. This is, this is an issue that comes about trying to live within a 1/12th budget.
Thank you. Dawn?
So John, you mentioned Chapter 78, and, um, as a district in our budget, we haven't even discussed the implications if that Chapter 78 gets cut by the legislature. So $24.8 million projected to Whitman-Hanson in state aid, a 5% cut even would be $1.2 million.
Correct.
Yes, and I know some area towns or districts have, uh, you know, allowed for 5% or 10 or 20 in their budgeting. So I think we're at risk. It's a, it's, you know, we're cutting it close, and we're hoping that the state will hold true to that funding of Chapter 78. Just something to recognize in, in addition to our challenges with the town meeting and supporting the budget.
I think it would be safe to say that once we finally get a budget from state, we're going to have to go back and, and look at what assumptions we made, and is, is, and are they still valid? And will we have to make further adjustments to the budget? And that'll all happen when the, when the state finally passes the budget that we have.
Mr. Boyce, then Mr. Colletti?
Sure.
Mr. Boyce, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, John, thank you very much. So it's kind of ironic, we say 1/12th, because obviously not every month is the same number of days and so forth. And if you talk about it, where you just mentioned payroll is, a, a, and other things can be every 14 days, you know, that's 26. I've been the same thing in the federal government. It's 26 pay periods. That's 13. Um, it would have been sizable not to say a 1/13th budget, but it would have been better if, because we're almost like trying to cram in, it's going to be two months of... Now, we're all hoping that it doesn't happen the whole year, but there could physically be that, uh, two, two, um, payroll periods, uh, one month, that we could be jammed up with, um, you know, it's almost like having a third paycheck, but you're not. You're trying to pay out.
There, there are, there are two, three paycheck months that happen. Happens every, happens every year when you get paid every two weeks. And for some people who are doing home budgeting, it means they go from paying their mortgage early to paying their mortgage late or something like that. Uh, in our case, uh, just because of our pay schedule, we have a three paycheck month in July, which is, in terms of cash flow, wonderful, because we, we don't have, they're not big payrolls. And then the next three paycheck month happens in December. Uh, so I fully expect that we will have resolved the budget to whatever it is, uh, by the time we get to December. Fortunately, it's not, it's not September, and that often happens that we have a three paycheck month in September. Um, and, and that would just be a mess.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Colletti, thank you.
Yes, that, two things. Steve, now, if we hit the 12th, the December, then we would be in trouble. But hopefully, we're out of this situation by then. But my, my, my question is, more or less, the state hasn't come up with a budget, and this is the first time I've seen it go this late. What happens if they don't get a budget by October, November, into December? Because, you know, they're just not doing their job anymore up there.
We just do the best we can, you know. You know, back in 2001, we actually did not get chair, actual cherry sheets, um, until November of that year. It was another year where it was quite late. In that case, the state had come to a, to a resolution between the House and Senate that, uh, was for local aid, and so they, they sort of took that out of order, if you will. And we now, we knew what we were going to get, and by the time we, we got to November, that in fact was, was what we wound up getting. So I'm not sure I see that happening this year.
I hope not. That would put us on a big, uh, big bind.
Sure. I mean, if, if we're looking to make cuts and we do it in December, we have to take 100, we have to take 100% of that cut in what is only 50% of the, of the, of the year left. So it, it becomes devastating.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you.
Does everybody understand what John just told you? If it goes to December, you have to take 100% of the cut with only 50% of the year left, and that would be devastating. It's, that'd be an awful, awful large amount. I, I don't know what you'd do, and borrowing the money at that particular point in time, John, would be difficult at best.
Well, I, we'd have to, before people would lend us the money, they'd have to actually see there's a clear path for repayment. And at that point in time, it, it's going to feel a lot like we're trying to do deficit spending. And, and I think that it'd be reluctant, is probably a good way of putting it. Now, um, one of the things I, I do want to say is, is this, we are just one of 80-some-odd, uh, regional school districts that are, that are in this position at this point in time. Most regional school districts do not have budgets that have been passed at this point because, um, so many towns haven't had their town meetings. So we're not in an unusual position. Um, the other thing is, the state, or at least the Department of, of Education, has been pretty clear about saying, if this goes, if this continues to go into the fall, that they may, uh, no promises, look to make adjustments to our, to our budget so that we can live within our means. So, so there is some hope if, if this continues for the long term.
Chris How, I mean, Chris Scrivener?
Thanks, Bob. I, John, I just wanted to thank you again for, for hanging on with us, because, um, you know, your experience and your knowledge and being able to articulate all these complex issues, I, it really is appreciated. And, you know, it's, these are obviously unprecedented times, and, um, again, we're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And, and you know, I've, I've, if, if I can speak personally about this, I'm, I'm sort of pleased to be able to do this, you know. Quite a number of years ago, um, I was appointed Superintendent of the district I was in. One of the first people who called me was a former superintendent here, John McEwen. Now, I didn't particularly know Dr. McEwen at the time, um, but he called and congratulated me and, and offered his help if I ever needed it. And over the years, I in fact called John a number of times, because when he made that offer, you knew he meant it. And he was quite helpful. So for me, this is sort of a, a debt of honor, and it's sort of come full circle. And the opportunity to help a district that, um, meant so much to John is, is, is gratifying. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on to the Regional Agreement Committee? Do you have anything to add, Superintendent Simon?
Just a, just a refresher from, uh, from, uh, uh, and what the process is. So we have town meeting in two weeks, the, the Monday and Wednesday, and fingers crossed, that all goes well for us. I think if we don't, the school committee then has an opportunity to reassess and produce another budget, um, to both communities, that the communities will have an opportunity to vote. If that opportunity fails, um, we are moved, the school committee can then call a super town meeting. And at a super town meeting, the only method of assessment is the statutory method. I just want to make sure that that's clear. We don't go back to what the agreement is, the agreement. Jeff doesn't have control over the budget. The school committee doesn't have control over the assessment of the budget. They just have control over the budget figure that's presented at that super town meeting. And that super town meeting is statutory only. Um, so I just want the, the public to know that, uh, that if we, we kick the can, um, and the school committee gives the town another opportunity, if it's not passed, to, to vote a budget. There's a timeframe. Um, the school committee has 35, 30 days or 45 days to produce a budget to, to the towns to vote. Um, the selectmen then can, can hold another town meeting, uh, for the citizens to vote on the school committee's budget. Uh, if the budget fails, I would ask the school committee to not use 30 days to produce that number to the towns for another vote. Uh, but then the school committee can then re, re, or, or has the opportunity to host, and this is key word, host, a super town meeting. And at that super town meeting, statutory is the method of assessment, and majority, the majority of people there, uh, can affirm or reject the budget. I just want that to be clear. And if people have questions on that, they can go on the DESI website. They can go on our Q and A on our website. Uh, it's spelled out pretty clear what happens when a budget doesn't pass at town meeting in a regional school district. Uh, people have asked me, and people on both sides have said, you know, is it full statutory? Does it go back to the agreement? Does it go back to this? What, what happens? If we go to a super town meeting that's called by the school committee, the only method of assessment is statutory, and, um, it's majority. Uh, it's not a two-thirds, it's a majority vote, uh, to affirm the budget.
Thank you. Ian, Colletti?
I just want to, just want to put down there that, um, 27th and the 29th of the town meetings, and I, I really think we should be meeting on the 30th.
We are.
We have business anyways, but one of the priorities... We have business anyways, but one of the priorities would be to, if any of these measures fail, we we get together and start doing the budget again, whether, you know, we redoing something or just putting it back out there. Um, but have the placeholder on the thirtieth. Just so we don't lose any ground, the longer it takes to put these things together, the more difficult it's going to be because you do have another, like Jeff was saying, you know, you go to town meeting, they reject it. We put it back out there. They reject it. You go to the super town meeting. And thirty, like you say, in thirty-five days, doesn't help out the district at all. We're already into the school season. And um, December is looking very close. And that December hits, we lose control of our school system's budget.
Ian, the only thing that could make the school committee meeting not be on the thirtieth would be if Hanson's town meeting lasted two nights and they hadn't come up with that our agreements yet. So that would be the only thing that would stop that. Don?
Thank you, Chair. Um, Jeff, to take it one step further, you mentioned the super town meeting. So it's a majority vote statutory on the school's budget. If the majority rejects that, right, the next step would be, we still don't have a budget, so we're still in the state we are today. And eventually, the the commissioner would review our district, right, would come in and look at the votes that have happened or the past, you know, what we've been doing. Um, and by December first, that commissioner would, the commissioner, I'm sorry, would set um has the ability to send a final budget for FY twenty-one.
Correct. So so the school, what I understand too is even if it's voted at super town meeting, the school committee can hold another super town meeting. They could, they can negotiate and try to work through until December first. That's my understanding. I don't know how many towns I got to multiple super town meetings. Um, my my um feeling is based on on if whatever happens at town meetings, if we have a decline, I will inform the commissioner where we're at on August first. Um, whether we have, whether we don't, on August first, if we have a budget, I inform him, say, hey, Mr. Riley, we're good. Whitman Hanson's awesome. This we we're supportive. We're gonna, we're gonna open September eighth. Thank you for your service from July to August. We're good. If not, I'm gonna tell the commissioner, our first vote has failed. This is where school committee's at, and this is their plan. He they will be, DESI will become more involved with us, I think, more than other regionals, because I think the fact that John said eighty-plus regionals are in a one-twelfth, the majority of folks will have their their town meetings by August. Uh, I did a simple, simple poll on the South Shore. It's like fifty-fifty of who has town meetings in in our local municipalities. And I assume that by the by August fifth or sixth, most towns will have a budget. Um, I think we are in a unique situation, but I will keep Commissioner Riley and his associates aware of where we're at, whatever happens at town meeting. But I think you're right, Don. By December first, I will notify the commissioner by November first, if we still don't have a budget. He and his team will then start meeting more frequently with us. And by December first, he will set a budget for the regional school committee or for the regional school district. Uh, whether that be higher, it won't be lower than FY twenty, but there is an opportunity for it to be higher. That doesn't necessarily help us because all our people will have been gone and our school will be up and running for for four months. And I want to just say, I've already had um three resignations from teachers that were rift. Uh, they've accepted other positions in other districts. Um, and that that will continue. Um, I have I've gotten one outside of the three that accepted one letter of reference, you know, please, can we use you as a reference? Jeff, uh, we're looking elsewhere. So that's happening, and it will continue to happen as towns assert or or approve their budgets. And and um our people are still without positions.
Thank you.
Go ahead, continue, John, and then Hillary.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want, it bears repeating what happened last year with this FY twenty budget. Um, and the towns of Whitman and Hanson, um, they were in a difficult position. And we know they reduced their assessment to the schools, and we lost nineteen staff positions. And um I haven't heard from a single other town department that they lost another employee from that budget, this budget FY twenty. So I, it it just bears repeating. You know, we have already made our cuts to this district. That's how I feel. We are not asking for anything other than to just be a level service budget prior to what we were for this year. I yeah, I don't think I'm saying it eloquently, but I just the frustration over that. Um, and if we have parents watching who are um in elementary school and middle school, um, I ask you to seek out the videos that Dr. Jones has been doing at the high school level and really communicating the impact of those cuts at the high school level. Um, it is severe. It is.
And and I appreciate that, Don. I think you expressed that eloquently. I I I believe that. And uh, Dr. Jones has been putting out videos. I don't want to say that the other principals aren't gonna communicate, but some of them are a little more camera shy than Dr. Jones. Uh, he 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 won't shy away from a camera. Um, but uh, the impacts of class sizes across the board are at every building. Hanson Middle will be hurt. Whitman Middle was hurt. There's already, we're over capacity there already. But the high school programming is taking a hit. There is every everywhere in the district will take a hit without a budget or or staying in a one-twelfth. And we took a hit last year as well. I know that in Whitman, um, salary increases went up July one. I heard that there was gonna be a freeze in Hanson. I I'm not sure of that. I don't want to misspeak uh whether or not those salaries went up. Um, so I I don't want to speak on that. Our teachers have been asked at one point to 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 help. Um, this is an assessment issue. It's not a revenue issue yet. And if it becomes a revenue issue for Chapter seventy, I think uh we can, we can talk about bargaining with the association if it's a true revenue issue. But right now, it's still a an assessment issue. Um, so I I appreciate what you said, Don, because you're right on the mark. And it's it's hurting. And I and and I go back to trying to open up with all the things that we have going on. We might be losing people as well. And you might not have a decision come come August fifteenth on how we we educate in September. It might be only one choice.
Thank you. Chris Howard, and then Hillary.
Yeah, so just briefly, I think um one of the things that was brought to my attention, this is specific to the Hanson side, is there seems to be some misinformation and or confusion around uh the correlation between the budget article that will be presented at town meeting and the assessment methodology. And it seems like there's some folks that are that are suggesting that, hey, vote no against the budget article as a because they simply don't like the assessment methodology. And that's really not accurate at all. Um, right? So the school committee uh did vote to support a budget that does have a compromise associated with it. And um essentially, that would be using the 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 agreement methodology to do that. But I think what's really important for folks to understand is the school commit, the school committee can unanimously vote to use the agreement methodology, the statutory methodology. It really doesn't matter because it requires both towns, Whitman and Hanson, to agree. So for the folks in Hanson that are under the impression that if I vote no against the budget, I'm voting no against the assessment methodology, and it's gonna come back to us at the school committee, we can decide whatever we want. But if the town of Whitman doesn't support it, it doesn't matter. So it's really important to understand that this is a uh a town meeting. It's a it's a vote to support the budget. Uh, it is, it is not a vote around, I don't like the uh assessment methodology, so I'm gonna vote no, and and it's gonna change. Um, it will, as as we've talked about repeatedly, the default methodology is Jeff just alluded to it. Go to super town meeting, it's statutory. So it's really important to not be misled into believing that a no vote is against the methodology. A no vote is against the budget, and the ramifications that we all talked about tonight will follow that. So I think it's really important for folks to make sure they understand that and 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 do the appropriate research and not just I be misinformed.
Thanks, Chris. Hillary.
Um, so two things. So, Chris, that was actually a question that I had. You know, I think that there absolutely is confusion around those issues. Um, is there, uh, it doesn't sound like it from the timeline, but would there be a possibility for another town meeting in both towns before the start of school?
So it depends on how fast the committee works and where the selectmen put the town meeting on. That's why I had John talk to you about cash flow as well. Um, I want to see where our cash flow is before we start school. And if I can make potentially a first payroll with our staff, with the opportunity to have a super town meeting and and then potentially laying people off because we have the cash flow. We will not have the cash flow in a one-twelfth too long, but we are looking at expenses and cash flow. Uh, and I'll have more for you at the end of July than I have right now. But my mind has been working to see how many, if this doesn't pass, how much more time do we have to educate our communities before we can get to a super town meeting or if we get to a super town meeting and have the opportunities before we start losing people? Um, so John will present more on cash flow and opportunities, uh depending on how that 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 meeting goes, those two meetings go on Monday, the twenty-seventh and Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. So I'm hoping to at least have one town meeting uh before teachers get here in Au in August. Um, and potentially two, uh, a town meeting and then a super town meeting before teachers return. I don't know if that's too optimistic, but before we make a second or third payroll because of cash flow opportunities. If we have the uh, if we have the finances to keep people on board and with the association in in tune, and we haven't talked about this yet, if I can keep people in place and then have to do layoffs because the town doesn't support the regional district, and we have to move to a hybrid or a remote model in October because we can't make payroll, maybe we'll do that. But trying to give people an opportunity to be heard as many times as possible and not lose staff in the meantime, because again, we're trying to, we're trying to open a school in a pandemic. And the oper, the thought of losing forty positions or being level funded um is 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 challenging. And the Chapter seventy question, if we remain level funded in Chapter seventy, we actually only get about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in increases a year in Chapter seventy. So I'll take the level fund. It's not gonna hurt us. It's if we decrease in Chapter seventy. Um, and if the state is level funding Chapter seventy right now, okay, I'm all right with that. I hate to say it, but I'm okay with that. Uh, but if the towns level fund us, I'm not okay with that. Uh, we are really in a in a pickle. We're a real bond. And and folks have said, you know, we're using athletics, cutting athletics, you know, the district has always cut athletics. I never put athletics on the board. As the principal of the high school, I never put athletics on the board because I don't believe that to be true. But every department has to take in a in a two-point-six-million-dollar reduction. I can't see cutting elementary teachers, middle school teachers, um, reading specialists and the like and 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 not and having freshman sports. I need to have a hit somewhere across the board. And we all know, I I I I hope I'm committed to to fine arts. We don't have fine arts to cut. There's no one there. We don't have music to cut. There's no one there. We have athletics. We took a cut out of that. Uh, and Mr. Rogers is explaining that as best he can. This isn't, this isn't a joke. This isn't, um, this is real. I don't have the, I don't have the money. It's not about, it's not about a budget that didn't pass, and we're arguing about it right now. This is the amount of money that I have, and I will not make payroll at at a certain time. And I'll I'll give this information to the community and to the school committee once we determine our July cash flow. Th- this month has already been challenging because we're trying to, it's end of year. It's end of fiscal year. And um we've been pretty busy with that. So we'll have a better idea of cash flow at the end of the month, what we can afford. And then I'll be, I'm meeting with Kevin and Cindy on Friday to to game plan about how long we can keep people on um before we we hit rock bottom. But we're pretty, we're pretty close.
Fred?
Uh, and the other.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'll be brief. And the other thing that's still an unknown as far as the revenue side goes is what's gonna happen with regional transportation, circuit breaker, et cetera. As I asked the question today to the uh Senate Ways and Means, uh, they reminded us that it was subject to appropriation. Uh, so, as a matter of fact, he couldn't remember the word appropriation. I had to put the word in his mouth, but uh.
Oh, I knew it was you, Fred.
You know, uh, but, you know, we we do have that very real fear that even if they level fund Chapter seventy, they pick our pockets with the other hand, so to speak.
Yep.
Uh, and that could be devastation, you know, for what we get for circuit breaker money, the amount we spend on special ed. And regional transportation is what, one point four, one point five million that we get reimbursed at eighty percent what we got last year, which was, we finally had it built up. You know, they drop that around, so.
The the only other budget piece before we move on, uh, Mr. Hayes, I was invited and I'd like to invite members of the school committee to the Whitman Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, seven o'clock. It's a Zoom. I don't have the agenda, and I don't have the Zoom code. Mr. Anderson will send it to me. Michelle is posting it as a meeting, so anybody can attend. Um, and I would like the support of the school committee. The original conversation was about uh non-mandated busing. And I was ca, uh, pretty candid with Rick when I said, I don't even know if I can transport everybody, never man, never mind non-mandated people right now. Um, but I think they're gonna want to talk budget too. Um, so as many committee members that want to attend, please feel free. I just didn't want to forget that opportunity. Seven o'clock on on Tuesday night via Zoom. And as soon as I get the connection, I will send it to you.
Count me in.
Anyone else? Will we move on? All good, relevant questions. Thank you all. Regional Agreement Amendment Committee. Jeff?
So, um, I think what we really have to consider is the revision to the amendment. I remember Whitman had sent, and it's in your packet, Whitman had sent a revised copy. I believe I heard two weeks ago, the Hanson Selectmen um had no revisions to that document. I don't have anything official from Hanson, but I know they put it uh on their warrant. Um, so I would ask this committee to approve the revision, the revised document uh based upon Whitman's revision, so we push it forward to both uh both communities.
The revision to the document was appropriating operating costs?
Yes.
That, uh, Section E?
Yep.
Age seven.
And then they gave you the rationale, yes.
You want me to read it, Jeff? I will. I think it, the apportionment of operating costs for the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year shall be determined by the sum of sections I and double I below. I, fifty percent of the operating cost for FY twenty twenty-one shall be apportioned between and assessed to the member town using the statutory method, mass general law, small c, section set, small c, seven zero, section six. Each member town's assessment of its share of said fifty percent of the operating cost for the FY twenty twenty-one shall be an amount calculated based on the method described in Section E, parentheses two. Double I, fifty percent of the operating cost for FY twenty twenty-one shall be apportioned between and assessed to the member town based on the respective pupil enrollments calculated as follows. Each member's town's assessment of its share of said fifty percent of the operating cost FY twenty twenty-one shall be amount calculated based upon computing the ratio which such members town pupil enrollment in the regional district on October first of two thousand and nineteen bears to the total pupil enrollment from all the member towns and the regional district school on October first, two thousand and nineteen. Number two, portion of operating cost for FY twenty twenty-two and thereafter will follow the staff statutory methodology as defined in six oh three, C M R four one dot double zero as follows. The apportionment of operating cost to a member town will equal the top, member town's minimum local contribution as determined by the commissioner of elementary and secondary education, parentheses, the commissioner. And the member's town's share of any other operating cost above the minimum local contribution referred to in this section is above minimal, minimum contribution. Such share to be calculated is provided in Section E, parentheses two, parentheses small d, here and after. The aggregate amount above minimum contribution for all member towns is arrived at by subtracting from the operating budget the following, Chapter seventy-eight, the aggregate minimal local contributions of all member towns and other general revenue sources to the district. Excuse me. Section C, this formula is illustrated below. Operating budget, parentheses, which includes capital debt, capital debt and transportation minus Chapter seventy-eight is calculated by DESI. Minus aggregate, aggregate minimum local contribution of all member towns as calculated by DESI. Minus other general revenue sources to the district equals aggregate above minimum contribution for all member towns. Each, Section D, each member town's portionment share of the aggregate above minimum contribution for all member towns. shall be determined based on the ratio that pupil enrollment in grades pre-kindergarten through twelve residing in such member town, including out-of-district pupils bears to pupil enrollments in grade pre-kindergarten through twelve residing in all member towns in the district, including out-of-district pupils on October one of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed. Parentheses, the enrollment formula. The total operating cost assessed to each member town will consist of the member town's minimum local contribution and the town's share of above minimum local contribution calculated under the enrollment formula. Part three, special operating costs include costs unique to the particular town for maintaining programs or services. These costs will be borne by the particular town member. That is the change. In layman's terms, Chris Howard, you want to explain it?
Yeah. Fifty-fifty.
So I just kind of sitting there, so I figured you, you want, want to participate.
Well.
In a bad-
I was reading along. I was making sure you got all the, dotted all the i's and all the t's, Bob.
Okay. Does everybody understand it? It basically an amendment stating this is a one-year deal in, in terms that the contribution will be for one year, and then in the two thousand and twenty-two year, it will go to total statutory method. And it refers back to what you said, Chris. That's why I put you on the spot with it.
So I'll, so Bob, I'll make the motion to uh, to to put forward the amendment, the amendments to the amendments.
Okay. That's a motion. Chris Scriven, will you second it, and then go to discussion?
Yes.
You seconded it. Get, did you get that, Michelle? Okay, Chris Howard, then Chris Scriven. Go ahead, Chris.
So just in terms of discussion, I think um, we're, we're right around the corner here from town meetings. We gotta, you know, the, the, the changes from the town of Whitman, I think, were more of trying to just do some cleanup work. It doesn't materially change, I think, what was originally there. So I'm in full support of doing this, putting it in front of the towns, um, and then we go from there. So, uh, at this point, we gotta, I think, move forward, and uh, hopefully this gets us forward. Um, I think that was the whole point of the exercise, was to get something to the towns other than what would just stay on one-twelfth demise. Um, so I think we've done that, and as others have alluded to, uh, we'll put our best foot forward, and if we need to adapt and evolve, then we will do such subsequently.
Chris Scriven.
That was just my second, Bob.
Here he is.
Go ahead, Fred. I just pushed the screen over. I saw you. Sorry.
No, no problem. Uh, I believe the, the Whitman Board of Selectmen uh, have bo- have voted affirmative to support the amendment and to support our school budget in its entirety. Uh, the fifty-five million uh, number, uh, with the additional teachers. Uh, so I, I don't know if Hanson's voted it yet or not, uh, but I do know the Whitman Board of Selectmen have uh, you know, endorsed that and voted for that and supported us, so, you know, and then we do thank them for that.
Okay. Chris Howard. Chris Howard, go ahead, Chris.
So Bob, Bob, and you can jump in if, if you have heard or seen otherwise, but I believe the Hanson Board of Selectmen has voted to place it, and they have not worked through the recommendations as of yet. Again, we'll just, let's just keep moving forward, and if we need to reassess, we'll reassess. Pardon the pun.
Jeff, the dollar amount that goes along with this amendment for this year?
I, uh, la, la, la. I think the-
Right around five hundred and somewhat thousand.
So if we're using, I'm looking at my drafts. Let's see. FY twenty-one budget, assuming FY twenty-one, chapter seventy, and, and the, 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 um, what dollar amount are you looking for, Bob? The operating assessment for this, for this?
No, what the amendment would mean eh, with a one-time dollar amount and then going to the statutory method from the town of Whitman.
Oh. I, I've never brought that, that, just that difference number. I've just given everybody their, the assessment calculations of what it would be. I've never given you a different, a difference of what that, that, that would be.
Well, I guess I, go ahead and give it to me.
So, so the total operating assessment, which I think we're using the chapter, or the FY twenty-one cherry sheets. Remember I had, there was a discussion between the two. Uh, it looks like the total operating assessment for Hanson using-
It's the one-twelfth budget.
No, that, I'm sorry. I've got the one-twelfth. I got the wrong one. Yeah. No shit. Thanks, John. John's here to save me.
Those numbers are getting thrown around. It's very confusing to everyone.
Yeah. I don't have the, I have my one-twelfth calculations right now, right now. I don't have the, what those assessments would be uh, off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I wasn't-
Let me see if I can find it in email.
Yeah, I think, I think I ha- I think I have. It's the sheet with the gray highlight, right, where it has the fifty-fifty where we went through it, Jeff?
Yeah.
So if, that's, if I, if I'm looking at it correctly, um, the fifty-fifty split results in an adjusted operating for Hanson of eleven, two, one, four, one, seven, six, and seventy-nine cents. And for Whitman of fifteen, three, sixty-seven, three ninety-one, and seventy-five cents. And it would otherwise, if we just looked at the straight operating, I think it's eleven, seventy-five, oh, nine, three, and fifty-four for Hanson, and fourteen, seven, nine, six, four, seventy-five for Whitman. So rough math, it looks like it's about five seventy-four would be the difference between the two of those.
Uh, Chris, Chris, those are just the operating assessments, not the total assessments, correct?
Those aren't the total assessments. Those are just the operating. So, exactly.
And is, is the date on the bottom of that five eighteen?
Say that again?
Is the, is the date on the bottom of that number, five eighteen?
Yeah, that's the one that says Whitman Hansen draft assessment FY twenty-one.
That's the correct one. John's giving me double thumbs up on that. So that's the record. Sorry.
Actually have the letter that we sent to the towns uh, for the assessment on the man, on the uh, operating budget. Hanson was eleven, two, one, four, uh, hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Whitman was fifteen million, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Is that what you just had, Chris?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so.
That's what I was looking for. John, go ahead.
Thank you, Fred. I'm glad you brought up that letter, because I wanted to ask about the assessment amount, the eleven-point-two million to Hanson. I watched a previous meeting, and I understood Mr. Stanbrook explained that they balanced their budget and had, because the override failed, they used ten-point-four million as their line of the assessment. Um, maybe they've updated that, and maybe it will go on town meeting as the eleven-point-two. But my understanding is, since we assessed that and we voted that, that Hanson needs to present that to their voters at town meeting, the eleven-point-two million assessment number. Is that correct? Chair Hayes.
John, can you answer that? Help you.
John can't answer that.
Uh, I think i- it's presented, if I'm not mistaken, it's the budget presented by the district. Now, they can amend the budget, the number, but I think that they have to present what we have certified so long, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, Mr. Small. The number that's presented, not necessarily the number that is ultimately voted on, is, is the school committee's number, and somebody can move to make an amendment to change it.
And they can give us more money, too.
That's right. They could, they could decide that, that they'd like to up it.
Okay. So is everyone, that was kind of what I was trying to get out, was the two numbers and where we were going with this. I hope I didn't confuse anyone. Anything else on the budget?
Well, we gotta vote, we gotta vote on, on this, Bob. You have a motion and a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to agree with the changes to the amendment from Whitman. Is there any further discussion? David Foer. Ian Cullody.
Yes.
John Byers.
Yes.
Steve Boyce.
Yes.
Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Hillary Niffen.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
I didn't-
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Red Small.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Ananimos.
Chair, did Mr. Scriven answer you? I didn't hear him.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I called on you, Scriv, didn't I?
Did, and I tried to answer, but yes.
I'm sorry.
And Hillary, I'm sorry. I didn't get you either.
Hillary was yes. It was unanimous. Okay.
Executive session, Bob?
Yes, the committee will enter into executive session and assess strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or lit- litigating position of the public body, as the chair so declares. Ladies and gentlemen, the only vote we will be, we will be taking is voting to adjourn when we come out of executive session. So good night, everyone that was watching the meeting. Thank you uh, for watching the meeting. Let's hope everything goes okay, and we are now in executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
This is a vote to go into executive session.
Did we need Ms. McGinn here?
No.
No, she's going out, too.
Ms. Fires.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Sniffing.
Yes.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard.
Looks like he froze. Looks like he's trying. Mud drops.
Chris, are you there?
There he is.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry.
Ian Cullody.
Yes.
Mr. Foer.
Yes.
Okay. We're in executive session.
Uh, well, wait a second. We still have the WHCA and-